I see a thumb. Very good. Thank you very much, everybody. We opened up the meeting over an hour ago. We had an executive session, and now we're back. And the first thing under public session is, as always, public comment. Is there anyone in the audience, either in person or remote, that has anything that they would like to address to us? If there is anything you would like to speak to that's on the agenda, that's the good time to do that. I'll be happy to recognize your hand during Agenda Items. But if there's anything unrelated to the agenda, now's the time. Not seeing anybody remotely. Going once, going twice. Public comment is closed. Next up is, we have a reorganization item.
Mr. Chair, I move the Board to table the reorganization Agenda item.
Second.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded. Into discussion?
Yes.
Okay. I will say technically, a move to table does not have discussion, but I will grant you that.
Well, this is the second time it's come up, and I should've said something the first time. So I'm gonna say things now that I think are important to the general public. When I have done research, and I've looked at many different towns, as a matter of fact, I did some research today, Boxborough, Hanover, Harvard, Wellesley, the MMA, Northborough, all say that you are supposed to rotate every year. Not when you feel like it, but every year, you rotate the chairmanship. And you rotate that because the Board loses its continuity. It becomes one person doing all the decision-making and letting us know what he chooses or what she chooses to divulge. It looks as though that's kind of a general thing that happens in many of the Boards, that the Chair stays on, and then the Chair and one other person kind of know what's going on at the time. And the rest of the Boards don't necessarily know anything. And they fear, why am I on a Board if I'm not gonna have any knowledge or any ability to add or create good for being on this seat and sitting here? And just, there was a comment, it's the Chair, and I often discuss topics as FYIs, which then, he communicates as needed. So when it's an "as needed" situation, why do you actually need the Board? Because we don't get to discuss. We ask to have things put on the Agenda, to ask about them. It's not the right time. Can you do it in a few months? And it's been historic that it's been like that. And I just don't think that it's as simple as just saying, well, let's just pass over this. Or, we can't manage because we have a new TA that we're gonna have. If we can't manage, again, we don't need to be a Board. We just need one person to take care of it. So I don't think that it's fair to jump into a motion without a discussion and say that it's gone on for three years in a position that should've been rotated last year as well as this year. It doesn't bring the Board to understanding what's going on. You're not bringing somebody else in to say, okay, this is what would happen if I wasn't here to be able to do it. It just stays in one person's hands. That, I don't think, is a good leadership position. And I don't think it's fair for the Board to do that. So you can continue then with whatever you might want to say.
Okay. Anybody have anything else?
Just if I can just add, I mean, I sent a note asking this because I'm departing. I thought it would make some easier time for all of us to stay focused. But relative to other matters, you know, I got a call about a structure fire. Those are the other things that I communicate to the Chair, that he then communicates out. The server being downtown all over the weekend. Those are the other things, just so, I don't want the Board to think it's other things, other than those types of things, that are on a regular basis with one member and not the rest. So I just wanted to make that clear.
Thanks.
I have a question.
Sure.
So we would postpone this until when?
It would be essentially postponed indefinitely, but it's going, it has to come up by law and by law, the first meeting after the election. If anybody wanted to bring it up earlier, we have that fancy new future Agenda Items item, and someone could bring it up there, and we could decide as a Board whether we wanted to have a reorganization sooner than that. But it's...
So choosing to not change anything, you're going against the chart.
I disagree with that, but if you wanna write a letter that Council could review, then we could do that.
Okay. Okay. So just to be clear, if we postpone it tonight, and someone wants to bring it up again, they just put it on the Agenda?
We can decide as a Board whether we wanna have it on the Agenda.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
But automatically, it's going to be on there the first one after the election, no matter what.
Right. Right. Okay.
Okay. I see a hand up relative to this item. Sure, come on up.
I'll try to keep it brief. This certainly isn't the most important thing. But it's important to me, just from, I'm Jacob Jones, 106 Green Street.
Great.
I agree with some of the comments that the member made. Simply from the standpoint of, if the Board wants to reappoint the current Chair, that's just a simple vote, reappoint the current Chair. Then you've addressed it. I don't think the right procedure is keep kicking the can down the road. Meanwhile, I think we have at least four very experienced members of the Select Board, any one of whom could be the Chair. And I think that cycling through that experience is healthy for a body like this. And finally, speaking as a member of the public who votes for Select Board members, we vote for Select Board members, not Select Board Chairs. And we presume that every member of the Select Board that we vote for has the equal amount of power and authority within the Board. And certainly, the Chair has some ability to set the Agenda, and I'm not suggesting anything's been done incorrectly, but I just think that that role should be cycled. And that's my only comment. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll have a statement relative to that after the vote. Laura?
I was just gonna say, I fully understand the importance of rotating Chairs. This year, with Tim leaving, has definitely added some complexity. And we didn't know that was gonna happen when this initially came about. I think that this is gonna make it easier through the transition process, but I understand where you're coming from.
Okay. Anything else from the Board? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
You have to say it.
You could abstain if you want.
Abstain.
Okay. So three in favor, one opposed, one abstained. Motion carries. I will briefly make a statement that if I am lucky enough to return to this Board after the next annual election, I am hopeful that another member would be interested in taking the Chair's role. But I appreciate the confidence the Chair has, and I appreciate the complexity of town administrator leaving and his request for some consistency throughout that process.
And I don't know who the fifth non-experienced member is that was referenced.
Thank you. All right. Moving along, continue the public hearing. I don't have to open the hearing, but we will continue the public hearing to consider petition number 30319263, submitted by Massachusetts Electric Company, DBA National Grid, to install underground facilities on Valentine Road Potter Circle and Orchard Circle from P7 on Fay Lane and heading north, heading at P33 on Howard Street. And, got some good in-person people?
Yes. Mr. Chairman, Scott Schaffert, here, Public Works Director. I have Chad Bonin from Control Point, the Design Engineers for National Grid. This is the continuation of the public hearing that began on August 12th. On August 12th, we had a couple of residents appear before the Board with some questions. The packet that was available at that time was very technical in nature, line diagrams and construction details that may have been a little difficult for the late person to comprehend clearly. The public hearing was continued. Between the August 12th public hearing and where we are today, the second mailing went out to all the butters, as indicated to the Board. The two residents that were here present with inquiries, they received the full amended package from National Grid that you all have in your packets. It includes a more in-depth and visual description of the work. So we were committed to opening the lines of communication. We were very clear with National Grid on what the expectations were. They spoke directly to one of the two residents that were here previously to make sure their concerns were met. The second mailing indicated any requests for further information should be emailed to the Town Administrator's Office. I don't believe any requests came in.
Did any?
Yes. I think eight requests.
Okay. So eight email requests came in. I didn't get any inquiries from anyone beyond that, so we're here to answer questions. Chad's the technical engineer on the project. If there's any further questions, what have you, we're here.
Chad, why don't you introduce yourself, just for the record?
Yeah. So I'm Chad Bonin. I represent National Grid as the Design Engineer for this project.
Great. Thank you. Do we wanna, is there anything else you wanted to present before we opened it up to public comment?
I mean, I'm really just here for the public comment. I mean, we submitted the package, you know, like I said, like he explained, you know, we added more detail, kinda explained it, and seemed like everyone was happy. So if there's any further questions, I'm here for it. Or if there's anything you want me to explain, I can absolutely do that.
Great. I do see a hand up from the audience. Nancy, you have something? If you could, do me a favor, yeah, we don't have an extra microphone. If you can, we'll make you the DPW Director for the next couple of minutes. If you could identify yourself, let us know what's on your mind.
Nancy Spetunick, 17 Orchard Circle. And I was the person who last month came up and asked some questions, and I appreciate the information that National Grid sent out. I also had a discussion with Christopher Wellington, who gave me some good information. And I wanted to come back and clarify some of our conversations, some of the things that we had concern about. I have talked to people in the neighborhood, so we do have a better handle on what their concerns are. And first of all, I wanna say that we're really all in favor of this project going forward. We really need this to be done. Not only have we had outages, but between last meeting and this meeting, Valentine Road had another outage, which just reinforces the fact we need this. The questions and concerns really concern the implementation of the project and its impact on the residents in our neighborhoods, and wanting some good information up front so that people just don't have National Grid show up and start digging up the street in front of their house. So they really want some good communication about this. And these are just a few of the points that I heard from neighbors, and I can give people a copy of this. Here you go.
Oh, you got one?
Yep. I have a few extra, if the Chair wants one also. So these, just a few points. Obviously, they want more notification about the project, when it will start, how long it will last, what exactly will be happening on the street, and will there be any work on their private property? So for instance, the work is actually gonna be done on one side of the street, but obviously, it's gonna impact the other side, so they're trying to understand that. There's a question that the side that they're working on has the mailboxes for the house, and they may need to take those down. They said they would put them back up by the end of the day, but in the meantime, how does the mail get delivered? Will it be safe for our kids to walk to and from the school buses? Because they're gonna be really impacting the street, and for us to walk our dogs? And what about trick-or-treaters on Halloween? And when it's all done, and this was a big question, will they fix up everything that's been disturbed in an acceptable manner? They're gonna be digging up the grass strip between the road and the sidewalk. They're gonna be digging trenches through private yards to get to the Transformers. There was a question from someone that, he's just seal-coated his driveway, and if they dig across the front of the driveway, yeah, they say they'll repair it, but are they going to do it in a way that's carefully done and professionally done so it doesn't go against what the property is worth because they've spoiled the driveway? So that was really the biggest concern. And I would imagine that the town would come in and work with National Grid and have some oversight to make sure that that was done. And that was really the biggest question and concern. But other than that, National Grid has been very forthcoming. I had a good conversation with Christopher. All through the packet, they talk about, we will have this contact. If they need to talk to someone, they can talk there, they can talk to the contractor. So they're being very open about the whole process, which is good, and we appreciate that. And we thank all of you and National Grid for the work that you're going to do to help provide our neighborhood with updated and reliable service.
Thank you, Nancy. You raised some very important questions in there. I will say that the supplemental information that we have in our Agenda packet from National Grid is very impressive. I learned more than I thought I would ever know about running underground conduits and how you get things into driveways and how you mark all the existing utilities and how you do all that. That's good to see.
Right.
I think anyone can imagine, you do those things, but to see the extent of which you do that and the extent of which you communicate that is impressive. I think there are some general questions that I would love for you and/or Scott to address, such as the, you know, there will be openings in potentially driveways, certainly in yards and things like that, for some period of time.
Right.
How do you protect?
Yeah.
Halloween is a big one, because people are walking, kids are walking around at night in great volume, and I have taken my kids trick-or-treating in that neighborhood.
Yeah.
We don't live in that neighborhood.
No, that's fine.
But my kids have friends there. How do you protect and keep that safe?
We won't be doing the work before Halloween. So we still have to get this approved before we can get all of our permits and everything in place to even start the job.
Okay.
So as of now, today, I got a rough estimate of spring of 2025.
Okay.
So Halloween won't be involved by this.
Gotcha.
The second thing is, the drill that is used is called directional drilling. I know it was explained in that packet, but the minimum depth to bury wire is 30 inches. So it won't destroy mailboxes or anything like that unless somebody dug a mailbox 36 inches in the ground, which I don't think anyone has done. So it's a minimum of 30 inches.
Yeah.
So if you come across something, we have to go under it, you can't go over it. So there should be no disturbances of driveways or sidewalks or anything like that, unless there's that, like, small chance something happens. But typically, in a neighborhood that's like this, that's not common, the only digging that will happen will be for the handholds, which are right outside of those small little green Transformer boxes that you see throughout the neighborhood. And that will be done with a small excavator and a vac truck, which will suck out all the dirt to keep the yard and everything clean, so there won't be a pile of dirt sitting in someone's yard. And then as for that, you know, there'll be the safety precautions of, you know, being coned off or whatever for that area that they're working in, but I mean, it's not gonna be the whole street. So as for, like, walking a dog or whatever, you might have to just go around the workzone for a minute, but then you can get right back onto the sidewalk and continue on.
Do you ever leave openings in the earth overnight?
So if anything, it would get covered with, like, a steel plate, which in this instance is not probably gonna happen, but you'd put a steel plate, which you see on roads a lot.
Yeah.
They are very heavy. A child can't move them.
Yeah.
So yeah, so if for some reason there is a hole open, it will be dealt with accordingly. But I don't foresee a hole being open.
What about the students going back and forth for the buses while there's work going on? Is that an issue, or do you have safety measures in place?
So yeah, there will be, you know, some sort of barrier wherever the workzone is to eliminate any sort of pedestrian or anyone from entering that zone. With that being said, you know, there may be cones that, you know, guide someone across the street ahead of time to cross around it, or maybe into someone's yard, depending, but typically, there's always some sort of marking, like, hey, this is the zone, you have to go around this way. Kind of like same thing with a car, like when you're going down the street. So it will be marked out.
And just an extra caution that kids don't necessarily follow all of those things. So I think that's something to really watch and be careful about, because the kids go by themselves.
Mm-hmm.
You know, they're not necessarily with parents.
Yeah.
Do you bring in police detail for this work?
Um, Scott, I don't know if there's police detail on this one, 'cause it's in a residential neighborhood, so I don't believe so. If it's something you guys wanted for the morning when the kids are there, I guess it's something that could be discussed with National Grid, but I mean, typically, I mean, they deal with, the contractor deals with stuff like this all the time in residential neighborhoods, so the precautions will be set ahead of time. So, and also, you know, I mean, if there's any other concerns, we can reach back out to National Grid on, you know, anything like that.
Laura?
If there is a possibility to have a detail when the kids are going back and forth to school, 'cause I think I've heard that trucks backing up can be really dangerous for children in particular, so if it's just the pylons, I would... Hi, Scott.
Scott? It's okay. Nancy, it's okay. So my suggestion would be, if there's gonna be a requirement, it'd be details or flaggers.
Okay.
Details are few and far between.
Yep.
And utilizing them when needed for traffic control.
Yep.
I think is a very appropriate approach, and flaggers can very easily, for a few hours, come in and just clear the sidewalk.
Yeah, I know, there are, like, four-hour minimums for details and things like that.
Yes. If, I wouldn't want to forego work on Church Street because of the detail on Orchard Circle.
Totally agree. And I think that's a safe alternative, but my fear would just be, like, when they were doing the work on West Street, it got a little bit treacherous with the trucks backing up, and they're so big and they can't hear. So I like the idea of a flagger. Thank you.
Do you need anything formal from us?
We can make a note of that, so that you would request flagging at least for the hours of the school bus stops and the morning and afternoon.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Okay. That's good. Do you have any other questions?
No, thank you.
Got a question for Scott. I know you don't formally oversee this work. Do you, when something like this is going on, do you, like, spot-check every once in a while to take a peek?
So the work's gonna require two permits through Public Works, a street opening permit. The street opening permit allows them to do excavation within the right-of-way. Under that permit application, we can condition the work. We can condition it such that flaggers need to be present anytime work is done within a sidewalk area. There'll also be a trench permit that's issued under Jackie's law. They are not allowed legally to leave excavations open and unattended overnight. So either it's plated off, or there's somebody sitting there all night watching to make sure nobody falls in a hole.
Fair. We're going trick-or-treating. Well, although we already discussed...
There's no candy in trenches.
Okay.
Life lesson.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions from the Board? Okay. Nancy, are your questions and concerns addressed, or is there something that we've missed?
The ones that I brought up have been addressed.
Great.
And the information that we got from National Grid was very open about if you... If you have other questions, we're here, please contact us, because we wanna make sure that you feel safe and comfortable with what's going on, and if there is an issue, we wanna hear about it so that we can work together on it. We really appreciate them coming from that perspective.
Can I ask one more question?
Of course.
So I think Linda mentioned at the beginning that there were eight inquiries that came in. Have those been answered?
Well, they just requested a copy of the packet.
Oh, okay. Perfect.
Yes, that was it.
Thank you.
I'll just relay what Linda said, is there were eight that requested a copy of the packet.
Okay. I misunderstood that.
Okay. Yeah, this one's fine. Okay. All right. With that, I thank you very much. Pleasure seeing you.
Thank you.
And I really appreciate you coming forward at both meetings, asking very good questions, and being sort of a helper around the neighborhood for others that have had some things come up.
My pleasure.
Makes our job easier, so thank you.
Okay. And thank you to the Board.
Thank you.
Nancy, are there any other questions from the public, either in person or remote? Anybody would like to address anything while this public hearing is open? Seeing none, I think our next step is to close the public hearing before we act on the request.
Yes, I move we close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay. Motion made by Mike, seconded by Laura. Any discussion? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
I see that as unanimous in favor. Public hearing is now closed. Board members, are there any other questions or comments before we act on the petition?
Thanks for coming in.
Yeah, thanks for having me.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Is there a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move the Board vote to approve petition number 30319263, as submitted by Massachusetts Electric Company, National Grid.
Second.
Okay. Motion made by Mike, seconded by Laura. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. I see that as unanimous in favor. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Chad, I don't know where you ended up, but thank you very much. Okay. Very good. Next up, we have item number seven, Blake Street Road closure. Would Skip and Pat like to come forward?
It's nice to see you.
Very good. So the request is by the Rotary Club members, Skip and Pat Doyle, for the Applefest Street Fair to close Blake Street on Saturday, September 21st, 2024. And based on discussion just prior to the meeting, I think you're also requesting as a rain date for Sunday, September 22nd?
It won't rain, but yes.
Okay.
It's just not going to.
Well, if we don't vote it, it would rain.
Absolutely.
This takes care of it.
Absolutely.
This is the weather forecast right here.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Why don't you introduce yourselves and give us a quick rundown as to the Applefest Street Fair, for not just the Board's benefit, for the public as well?
So I'm Skip, and this is Pat Doyle. And we are members of the Rotary Club, and we have operated, shall I say, the Street Fair for quite a few years now. And it is part of the Applefest weekend, and it happens on the 21st, a Saturday, down Blake Street, filling out the whole space. And it's just a phenomenal time for everybody. It's just great to have so many people get together downtown all at one time.
It's, all of a sudden, allergies kicked in this afternoon, and I've lost my voice, it seems. It's, the Street Fair serves many purposes in town. Certainly, for the Rotary Club, it is, honestly, a fundraiser. The amount of money that we raise at the Street Fair goes directly back into the town for any needs that the town may have, any people who may have needs, or anything, you know, we've done many things for the town, defibrillators in the schools, et cetera. But it also serves that big purpose of bringing the townspeople together, and that's been one of the important pieces of it over the years. This year, it looks like it's gonna be a banner year. We have well over 70 individual vendors coming this year. We'll have well over 100 booths. We've got a wide sampling of people. We've got close to 20 brand-new people this year. We've got things like Mike's Vending in La Miette de la Mai, and Omen's Ice Cream, and Ash Burger, and Kettle Corn, and Northborough House of Pizza for food, local organizations like the Northborough Historical Society, the Trails Committee, the Cultural Council, the Arts Council, Boy Scouts of America, the American Legion, the Democratic Town Committee, the Council on Aging, I said Boy Scouts, St. The Churches, St. Rose of Lima, Seventh Day Adventist, Rice Memorial Baptist Church, businesses in town like Wegmans, Bathnasium, School of Rock, Jack's Guitar Garage, Hot Works, Homestead, St. Mary's Credit Union, Central One Community Advocate Chamber of Commerce, Footprints Floors, Brackenhill Farm, America's Best Defense, Youth Lacrosse, and Beaumont Whitney Place, and I could go on and on to get them all out to you. So there's many, many of them. One thing we're doing this year that we would like everyone to know is that this, we're calling it the greening of Applefest. And we, as a Rotary Club, are very much committed, uh, Street Fair, the greening of the Street Fair, can't do the whole thing, the greening of the Street Fair. You know, we're, as a Rotary Club, we're very much into sustainability, and so we're being very careful. One of the main things, and we see some of you with your own water bottles, we are asking that there be no water bottles at the Street Fair, plastic bottles. Bring your own water bottle, and we will have wonderful, clear, pure Northborough water in camboes around the fair, and you can just go fill your water bottle up so you don't up so you don't have to worry about it. The young people are going to be working on picking up all of the trash, so we're not going to have a dumpster this year. Hopefully people will take out what they bring in and the kids will be showing, sort of like a, an educational thing of how, what are the different types of, of recycling and where should things go? So that's our big push this year is, is the greening of the Applefest Street Fair. So that's kind of where we are. It's exciting. As we said, it's not going to rain. It's not allowed, so let's hope. And so if there are any questions, otherwise.
I want to say a couple of quick things is obviously the Northborough Rotary Club puts on the street fair. I am also a member of the Northborough Rotary Club. I don't handle any of the money or anything like that, just so in case anybody is concerned about that. We have a long history of, of town government officials being involved in the Northborough Rotary Club. And there is a lot more to Applefest than just the street fair. I noticed, I think Cable put a slide up on here about Mary Ellen Duggan being the, the Applefest Grand Marshal, which is, you know, primarily there during the parade, which is not a part of Rotary, but it's part of Applefest as a whole. So it's a, you know, it's an excellent, excellent weekend, but a lot of people, when they think of Applefest, think of the street fair. That is, you know, for many people, that's the keynote event.
We should say that it is from 10 to 3.
Mm-hmm.
So that's the time we've, we've, it sounds like some people wanted us to expand it, but more people wanted us to contract it. And so which way did we go? And we decided this was the best way to go because people have other things they need to do before and after. So it is 10 to 3 and we are asking our vendors to stay. They will be there at 10 and to stay till 3, so it'll be a full fair.
Great. Are there any questions from the board? Lisa, then.
Hi, good to see you again. Last year, I had a couple of people who are handicapped that had an issue with the handicapped accessibility, I guess the crosswalk and all that, right? Where it comes into 20.
Yep.
So I'm sure you probably heard about it too and they would be, I'd be remiss if I didn't bring it up.
Right, well, we've, we've been up there to take a look at it, to see exactly, we're going to back the, the first booth up so that it's behind that area and comes down from there. So yeah, we've, we saw, we realized it wasn't there before. It was something that had been added and so we, you know, had put a booth near it, but that's all taken care of.
Okay, good. Cause there's a lot of, there are a lot of people now that are somewhat handicapped and, you know, want to enjoy, I shouldn't say that, there are, there are handicapped folks who would like to come down and find that some roadblocks of that nature are very difficult for them. But it's, uh, it is a wonderful thing. You've done a great job and looking forward to seeing you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah, I guess first thank you for all of your work and I just want to be clear, you do want the street closed from 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM to get set up and?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? I want to give a thank you to the DPW, to Scott Sharp and Tier for, for you, you had mentioned the water.
Yes.
A benefit of the town owning Four West Main Street is that has good quality Northborough water going into the building, which we will be using and giving away. And that's great because usually, usually there is a couple of vendors that are giving away, you know, these, you know, 16 ounce plastic bottles and we end up with hundreds, if not more, of them piled up everywhere. And the goal is to, to not have that and get people to bring reusable water bottles or anything else and, and have as much water as you want. Hearing nothing else, I will entertain a motion to close Blake Street. My suggestion would be in addition to the motion here, that we also include the language and rain date Sunday, September 22nd, 2024.
Mr. Chairman, I move the board vote to close Blake Street on Saturday, September 21st, 2024, or Sunday, September 22nd, as a possible rain date between the hours of 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM for the annual Applefest Street Fair.
Second.
Okay, motion was made by Julianne, seconded by Mike. Any other discussion or comments? Yeah, Doug, if you could, I'm sorry, for the microphone, I need you to step forward if you could.
Okay. Yeah, just a quick question. I know Pat mentioned that there would be no trash there because we're going to take, take out what we had.
It's helpful for people at home to hear.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, so Pat said there would be no dumpster there because you wanted to take out what you'd brought in. But if people are buying pizza and they got pizza wrappers, is it going to be a place for them to put them?
Yes, yes.
Sorry, do you want to walk through that a little bit more?
Yes, yes, they will. They're the, we're talking about this a little bit, sustainability, but educational as well. And sometimes, as you probably know and everybody I'm sure here knows, sometimes you go into a restaurant or someplace and it's like, well, you're supposed to put this in this bin and that in this bin and what are you putting what bin? And so the young people are, kids are young, are interact kids who are the high school Rotarians actually won a gold prize this year for their, what work that they've done environmentally. So they're going to be educating people. So if you come up there and you've got a pizza plate and you're going to throw it away, they will explain to you which one of the bins to put it in. And then they're going to be, you know, making sure that those things that are recyclable get taken out to the recycling plants. And then the, the DPW will be picking up big bags at the end of stuff.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Good question, Doug. Thank you. Any other comments or questions? We have already a motion and second. All those in favor? Aye? I see that as unanimous. Thank you very much for joining us this evening and best of luck on the, on the 22nd and the 20th, or the 21st.
21st.
And the 20th, yes. And the 22nd will just be for other things. Hopefully the parade will take place. I know that's not your thing, but hopefully the parade will take place, the schedule on the 22nd and all of the other events throughout the entire weekend.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
Thank you for joining.
Is, is Michelle Gillespie coming at all in front of us?
Uh, no, the only procedural thing that we had to do was to close Blake Street. There's nothing else that we need to take action on. If the board is interested, we can invite her, you know, afterwards to give a recap or ask any questions that the board might have about the Applefest.
I, I think that would be a good idea this year because it's been, she, I, I remember coming before the board earlier in years and last year she wasn't here and I think it'd be nice to do the, let's talk about it. Yeah, but. She, I mean, how much, how much municipal land?
Right, it won't be until after.
You know, do, how much municipal land do they use for Applefest? We're not talking Blake Street, but all the other events that happen. And in so doing, do we ever get an accounting and do we know what, what goes back to the town from the Applefest event?
I might suggest maybe you could write a few things down that we could send to Michelle and the Applefest Committee and we can invite them to, our next meeting is the 23rd, which is just the day after Applefest. Maybe the one afterwards, because they're probably going to be sleeping late that day because everyone's so busy.
Yeah.
So maybe the, I forget, the, the first meeting in October, would that be all right?
Yeah, yeah, I think we really need to. We need to start doing some.
Great. Linda, if you could do me a favor and pencil that in? And, and then once Lisa submits some things, forward that to Michelle and so they have some time to prepare. Good. Any other questions or comments before we continue? Next up, we have change of manager application request, Mormax Corporation DBA BJ's Wholesale Club for its all alcoholic package store license for the premises located at 6102 Shops Way. And a couple of people have joined us. If you could identify yourselves.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the board. I am Eugene Richard, attorney for Mormax. And with me is the proposed manager, Sean Yeton, applying to be the on-premises manager. Mr. Yeton is a U.S. citizen, a resident of Franklin, Massachusetts. He's over the age of 21 and no criminal convictions, so he is qualified under the statute. And, and briefly, he is also very experienced. He has worked for BJ's in various locations for 11 years and in various states. But, and, and has been in a number of clubs that, that sell alcohol, not all in Massachusetts, but these, these laws are very similar when you go state to state. So he's very familiar with the basic laws and procedures that apply at the store level and point of sale and, uh, all phases of BJ's operations as well. And a lot of, in his organization and the size of BJ's, a lot is computerized and there are all sorts of procedures and, and safeguards built into their systems. So he's well aware of all that. I believe I mentioned he's TIP certified. And, and I would just say pending any questions from the board, we request your approval of Mr. Yeton as the on-premises manager.
Could you do me a favor? Introduce yourself.
Yeah, absolutely. Ryan Yeton, 15 Summer Street, Franklin, Massachusetts. Been operating the BJ's Club in Northborough for about six months now, just getting back from Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, where I opened that market. Also owning and operating license out there for beer, wine, and liquor.
Excellent. Thank you. And we have a letter in our packet in addition to your application information from Detective Christopher Bazell, basically saying having, that he conducted a background check and having conducted this background check, I have no concerns to report to the board. I happened to see our police chief in the back of the room. I imagine there's nothing new to, to report on that?
That's exactly what I would have said, so he wrote it down.
Yes.
I wish.
Okay, very good. Any questions from the board?
I just, you, you coming back from, what is it, Pennsylvania?
Yes.
So are you then the, the director of all the liquor stores in certain, in all these different areas or?
No, I racked in a club manager position and capacity, so I've specialized in opening emerging markets for the last six years. So I did some clubs in Michigan, Ohio, and Pittsburgh. Uh, and then most recently had the opportunity, because I'm born and raised in Rhode Island, to make my way back to New England and take over this club.
All right, because that's been, I mean, they've had it there for quite some time.
12 years, I believe, for that location.
So do you think you'll be doing anything like a special open house ribbon cutting or any of that or just business as usual?
No, nothing special. Business as usual, just replacing movement.
Okay, thanks. Well, good luck.
I mean, a free sample of store department.
Can't hit.
I don't think we could do that.
That's, that's not.
See, I'm not experienced.
Yeah, that's what it is.
There's free samples of food often.
Right, right. See, it balances each other out, but I, I don't have any other questions.
Okay, thank you.
Just, so you're going to be manager of the whole store?
Correct, yes.
Well, congratulations.
Thank you. It'll be number six that I have.
Wow, wow. Well, that's a good recommendation right there, I guess.
I hope you stick around a little while.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, good.
Will there be, sorry, will there be any other changes at the club when you take over?
No, no, I've been acting in place for the last six months in collaboration with the previous club manager, Malika Harris, who held the license. So everything will be business as usual.
Great, thank you.
Great. This is not formally a public hearing, but if there's anyone in the audience that has anything that they want to address, feel free to raise your physical or electronic hand. I'll be happy to recognize you. Seeing none, seeing no other questions from the board, I'll entertain a motion.
It's quiet, must be me.
I can't see your name.
It's cut off.
Is it me?
Yeah, can't see it. All right. I move the board to approve the application as submitted by Mormax Corporation, DBA BJ's Wholesale Club for a change in manager for all alcoholic beverage package store license for premises located at 6,102 Shops Way.
Second.
Motion made by Lisa, seconded by Julianne. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
See that as unanimous. Ryan, thank you very much. Welcome formally to Northborough. Wish you lots of success. And Eugene, thank you very much for joining us this evening and all set. If there's anything the town can ever do to help, let me, let us know.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, nice to meet you.
Next up, we have fire station building project, construction budget request. I'm going to bring in, let's see, Chief, do you want to?
I can come up if you want me to.
In the anticipation of there being questions or, I see just Tim, I'm going to assume that Tim is, Tim Alex.
He was on the road, remember he said he was.
Okay. Yep, okay. He didn't have his last name on there, so someone named Tim, I'm trying to bring you into the meeting. I assume you are Tim Alex. I'm calling yours. And is that Don that I see back behind Fran? If you, if you would like to come forward as chair of the Fire Station Building Committee, that would be great. Okay. All right, Tim, either maybe the wrong Tim or more likely is driving or something like that declined to join, so if we have questions.
I think that's what he'll.
Okay, that's great. Do we have a couple of slides?
Related to the warrant article itself, that's.
Okay, okay.
That's it.
We wanted to do a, a little budget update, so.
Memo's in the packet, I think the chief and O'Jason can speak to it too.
Yeah.
I can check this out.
Yeah, let me. I mean, the short version of this, I'll just relay, because I'm also a member of the Fire Station Building Committee, is that, you know, early on.
Maybe I don't.
Yep, early on, the first cost estimate that we had was somewhere between 45 and 49 million. And then through the series of, you know, refinement of design and everything else and further cost estimates, we've got the, the final budget figure down to 41,364,992. We're expecting roughly $1.9 million worth of rebates back on energy conservation matters. Geothermal is the, is the bulk of that. We'll also expect some on EV chargers, about $50,000 back on that. And solar panels, I think it was 73,000.
Something like that.
Something along, along those lines. If you actually add that up, it's a little over $2 million, but we're using the $1.9 million figure, so that is, is what results in the, in the budget request of, I don't know, it was on there, 39, 39 million and change. Is there anything else that?
No, yeah, the, the, the 39, so the, the 39 million is not the number that would be on.
Right.
Going to town meeting. That's the number we would hope to borrow.
Yep, so I seek approval from town meeting because you need to appropriate the entire project budget for any project. And that's the same with, say, a school construction project where you might get 50% back on that, you still need to appropriate the whole amount so that the town can have, have that cash flow with the whole process. But the, you know, Jason can speak to this better than I can certainly, that the anticipation is, is that the rebates that we just talked about come back early enough that we would not have to do long-term borrowing on that roughly $1.9 million.
Correct. The, the assumption was we may, we may have to do some short-term borrowing, but we didn't even, we were hoping we didn't even have to do that.
Yeah, yeah. And that's, we would, probably wouldn't even know those details.
Right.
Until we, we get into the project. Jason, I didn't know if there was anything else that you wanted to, to add at this point? I know it's, we've, we've.
You handled it perfectly.
Thank you. And I know that, you know, we've, we've had discussions about this project and, and a lot of these details several times, and this is now essentially the final one, that we've already opened the warrant and closed the warrant. And today's job is to set the final language on the warrant articles and so forth. So that would be the next item right after this. But now that this is, the Fire Station Building Committee has formally made the request for the 41,364,992 as the project budget to be requested at town meeting, it was appropriate to bring them before the board and see if the board had any questions. Lisa.
We talked about, you just mentioned solar panels. And I'm concerned that if those solar panels go in, that the trees behind that building And I'm concerned that if those solar panels go in, that the trees behind that building are going to be cut down because there won't be enough light coming into the solar panels. How can we make sure that isn't going to happen?
Well, the solar panels, the, the plan is to make the building solar-ready. Whether or not the panels go in will be something that the committee or the town will have to decide. As far as them, of the trees being an issue, we can flat-mount them on the roof and it won't be, the trees won't bother them at all.
You mean, trees won't bother the obstruction of the light?
Flat-mount them, the sun's coming straight down.
Does that mean, that's a, that's a huge worry, that those trees are going to be gone, and the people that live up on the hill won't have any protection?
No, we have no intention of taking those trees down at all. In fact, that was one of the big discussions we had with clear-cutting that whole area in order to get the slope down and get rid of the, the wall. And to do that, we would have had to clear-cut that whole hill, and we didn't think that was appropriate for that reason, exactly what you said, Lisa.
And in the end, we still couldn't have done it.
Yeah, it's not fair to the neighbors.
So we, we did have, at the same time that we did the geothermal survey, we also did the survey for the solar panels. So someone has already looked at the, the angle that the sun comes down different times of year and confirmed that the building is fine for solar without the removal of, you know, of any trees other than what, what is already going to be removed to, to build the station.
And then how far after would you go for solar panels?
So the, the budget currently has the estimated cost, two hundred and thirty thousand.
Yeah, it's an estimated cost, but.
It hasn't been designed yet.
Hasn't been designed.
So you're required under code to make a building solar-ready, so that is in the building project. So that's in, in what the architects have done the design work on and what will be bid and constructed. And then the actual installation of solar panels, we do have the estimated from the budget from that survey that was done. They also gave us the, it's when they gave us the estimate on about two hundred and thirty thousand dollars for the solar panels. As we get further in the project and we see how's the budget going and everything else, we will then take another look and decide, will we actually do that? So the installation of the solar panels is not in the general contractor budget right now. Or it's not, it won't be bid out for the initial, because it's a, it's a completely different process anyway. It's a different designer that has to design that and a different contractor that has to put it in. I think we're very interested in doing that, that, you know, building, modern buildings right now consume electricity as their, their source of energy. And so anything we can do to offset that would be a good thing.
Well, do we have like a contract of how much we actually make on the solar? Because sometimes solar panels, if you don't own them, you make two cents on the dollar.
So, so the intent that we have discussed, again, we haven't made a decision on it yet, is to purchase them outright.
And that's part of that two hundred and thirty thousand?
Correct, yeah. But there are, there are options. I know, you know, Tim is exploring options for other municipal buildings, and there are different ways of doing it. The most cost-effective way, if you have the funds to do it, is to purchase them outright, because then you're not sharing that electricity or that money with anybody, because that goes right to the town.
Right, well, that sounds like a better idea. And then if that's the case and you do them, what about those, those light?
The monitors, the roof monitors?
Yes, roof monitors.
So the, the monitors were actually in the, in the original design when they had talked about putting the panels on those monitors. However, there's other, there's plenty of roof space where they can put the monitors flat-mounted. They discussed that as well. We discussed that as well, and different options for it, so that wouldn't affect them.
So they'll still be up?
Mm-hmm. Well, originally, the original plan had three. After discussion and looking at the price, we cut down to two, so there's two roof monitors on the roof now.
They're angled in such a way that the panels will go on the opposite side from the windows, from the glass. So they, they fit in well with each other, and there's additional roof surface area to add additional panels beyond just those two monitors.
Correct.
Are you all set, Lisa?
Yes.
Okay, Mike.
Just to follow up, would a decision to actually install the solar panels be a decision by the building committee? Or would that come back to the select board?
By the building committee.
By, just the building committee?
Correct, yeah. Building project under town charter is under the town administrator. So in theory, if this board had a strong opinion either way on the solar panels, at some point, the, the board could, could weigh in and issue a directive. Typically, the board doesn't get involved in details like that, but it's, it's open to that.
I have one other question.
Sure.
Page two. It talks about the impact to residents in single-family home values.
Sure.
Can we talk about that?
Why don't we ask Jason to come up if it's a tax-related question?
Do I stay here? Sure. You have to move.
Don, move faster.
I tried to get off the seat, but I didn't.
There'll be no kneeling going on.
Thanks, I appreciate it.
Okay, I'm looking at, obviously, the, the chart that you have, and I'm sure that the general public is going to be wondering about this question, so that's why I'm asking. So if I look at this chart, nothing is going to come out of our, additionally, our taxes of next year, right, twenty twenty-five? Or are we in twenty twenty-five right now?
We're currently in twenty twenty-five, yes.
So, so then twenty twenty-six, if I have an eight hundred thousand dollar house valued at, so I'm going to be paying five hundred and thirty-eight per quarter or per year?
Annually.
Annually, okay. So all of these are annual. All right, did you hear that, general public? Because that question keeps coming up. So, all right, that's just what I wanted to clarify. Thank you.
So the next page is a more detailed debt schedule.
Okay.
Which goes to the trouble of breaking it down to monthly and daily. So.
I have a question for you.
You can see, you can see all those increments.
Okay.
There on that page.
Lisa mentioned the first year, which a lot of people are, they want to know, because that's the first year that we're paying taxes on it. As with most municipal bonds, you're paying.
Correct.
As you pay it, the, the annual amount drops down, so eight hundred thousand would be five hundred and thirty-eight for the first year. Somewhere around three hundred and ninety-seven in the middle, and in the last year of a thirty-year bond, two hundred and forty-six dollars. And, I mean, this is all in our agenda packet, but for the average house, the average year is three hundred and twenty-one dollars per year.
Across thirty years, correct, yes.
And what's the number for the average house that you're using? Four hundred?
Six hundred fifty-five thousand.
Okay.
In value.
And is there any, is there any thought and discussion of bringing it to a twenty-year instead of a thirty-year?
There's been discussion about it. I mean, there is some hope that there'd be a differential in the interest rates when we go to market, that potentially a twenty-year bond would be feasible within numbers that we've presented here. It's a very large project. The differential, we crunched the numbers. There'd have to be a three point two five percent interest rate differential between a twenty and thirty-year from the market, and that's very unlikely to happen. It would be more like three-quarters of a percent or something like that. So in actuality, I think, I mean, it would be, we'll come back to the board before we borrow or go to the market with this bond, but it's very likely that it's going to be a thirty-year bond.
Okay, because I'm concerned, you know, just with the fact that you could be spending ten million just on interest and extra on interest, and that we're going to be having other bigger projects coming up, too. So it's not the only, only game in town, unfortunately, so we really have to look at the, the cost effect and what we can save in any way we can. So, but you're always pretty good about this, so thank you.
Julianne?
Yeah, I have a question about the thirty-year mortgage also, because does, I mean, we do have two more really big projects coming up. It's, how will the thirty-year mortgage affect those versus a twenty-year?
Well, I mean, I, I think, going back to the financial trend or financial summit meeting that we had in August, I think we tried to project out and looked at some of these big projects that are coming, the, the first being Peaslee School, and that we modeled about forty-five million dollars of, of debt for that project being added on in five years or so. We're still within our local, locally-set financial policies for, for debt limits, so we're still within that. It's, it's tax impact either way, but it's within our internal policies to be able to fund both of these projects. And I think we haven't run the numbers yet for another big project afterwards, but, or, say, a town hall or something of, of that size. We haven't run that, those numbers out into twenty years from now or something like that, if that, if that answers your question. I, I, I think that's the point of how municipal debt is usually structured with declining principal. We're making a level principal payment, and as time goes on, the, the interest declines. So the, the assumption is that, you know, there's going to be future projects that are being done.
Right, right, okay.
Well, I know we've got a feasibility study for the, for the police station coming up, too, so that's, that could also be in the mix.
Yeah, from, from what I understand, that what's being discussed for the, for the police station is, is much smaller in scope than building a new building.
So just a renovation of the building?
Right.
Other questions?
So we, I guess this is a question for the committee. Is there, we, we didn't, the three-D model is out of the question. Is there a way of putting stakes in the, on the lot where this is going to be built so people can see how, how big this project is?
No, it was staked out at one point.
Well, what, what was staked out was the locations of the underground catchment. In order to do that, Julianne, we'd probably have to bring in surveyors. It's nothing I could do or would be. I wouldn't trust myself to be out there with a wheel and say, I think it's this big. Is it doable? I, I guess, but I don't know if there's a, I mean, the plans have been, are pretty easy to look at, so it's truly up to the committee if they wanted to.
You know, seeing it in real life is.
But we have no money to do that at this time, left in our.
We've already had the surveyor, right?
We've had the surveyor survey the lot size, but they haven't surveyed where those stakes would go to lay out the building.
Yeah, someone would need to do a survey to mark the corners of the building. And they have, they, they know geographically where they are going, but for someone to walk out there and say, ah, this is the GPS coordinate of this corner, and put something in there, someone needs to, some professional needs to do that.
And that would be?
I have no idea, but we had, there's no money left in the committee of the three point four nine 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 nine.
Well, I guess, does anybody else think that it would be a good visual for the taxpayers to?
I mean, I guess it might be, but specific to us executing the warrant.
Right, that's true.
You know.
That's true.
I see Scott about to volunteer some information.
I'll kneel again.
You can stay, Jason. He's going to move anyway, so Don can come down.
Yeah, so the land surveyor who did the original project survey would have to come out and stake it. I don't think it would gain a lot of, or add a lot of understanding of the size of the building. If it was an open field, excuse me, and you're looking to lay out a shed, a pool, a deck, a foundation of a house, yes. This is a significant sloped property with a lot of vegetation. I don't, without a lot of clearing out there, I don't think you'd really, I mean, I would have a hard time probably grasping the, the massing just based on a bunch of stakes in the, in a field like that. Staking out the, the gonkplex, that would be a lot better, because it's a nice open space. That's not what we have here. So it may not gain what, what you're hoping. I know what you're looking to get. I don't think it would really, I don't think you'd get what you want out of it.
Because we're going to need to dig into that hill.
Yeah.
And so you'd have stakes that would be up the hill when, in fact, that you'd have to look from the sky down to see.
And you wouldn't see them because of all the vegetation on the hill.
And the building.
But you would see the, how big the front is going to be, because that's pretty clear already.
Yeah, the two front corners, with that, that you could see clearly. The building would look obscured in size because of the slope. So it's not a square plane, it's this big slope, so it's going to look odd. It's going to look massive on this hill, and it's not, when you flatten it out, it's not like that. So I think it'll be just, it won't accurately represent what the, what the site would look like, I don't think.
Thank you.
Thanks. Other questions? Okay. There's nothing for us to act upon upon this. This was informational, so that we know how the committee arrived at the budget request and had the opportunity to ask some questions. If not, you know, we'll take up this specific language of the article in the next item.
I just want to, I, I thought we were already on the meeting warrant item, so I apologize, Julianne. If I was like, oh, it's not pertinent to the, we weren't even on that item.
That's fine.
I'm not paying attention.
Obviously, these two are very close.
They're very close, but I just wanted.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay. I can't think of anything else. I, you know, certainly want to thank the, the building committee for working very hard to get down from that forty-nine million dollar number, which terrified everybody, you know, down to something that is at least more manageable. You know, more than we thought it would be at the beginning of this, you know, certainly when we did the feasibility study a number of years ago. But time intervened in a, in a way that construction inflation really, really hurt us. So that's, that's just where we are. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Want me to stay for the next, in case there's questions, or? I can.
I, I'm going to say probably not. Maybe you stay, though, because there are, because we're talking about numbers.
That's a good thing.
Some money means.
All right, so now we're moving on to vote to approve and execute the October seven, twenty twenty-four special town meeting warrant. Tim, was there an updated version of the packet?
If I may, what was, what went with you in the packet was a draft, and we worked up until three thirty today with bond counsel on this updated warrant that you will hopefully ask you to. So the first artist, she has to, she can pass.
Okay.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you.
First article deals with the sewer enterprise fund, which Scott and O'Jason can talk to. The reason why that's there, in my mind, is we had been through settlement talks with the city for a long time. It never seemed to pan out, so we created a budget based on it not panning out for twenty-five. So that's what this warrant article will do. It'll do two things. Make an adjusted payment for this fiscal year that we're in. And then, because we didn't adjust twenty-four at the beginning of this fiscal year, we'll pay that true-up cost that they do at the end of the fiscal, which is part of the IMA, correct?
Correct.
That's correct. So those are those two pieces. If you want more detail, they can talk, but.
Sure. I'll, I'll repeat back to you in a, in some different language, just to make sure I understand it right, and this might be helpful for the board. We had the longstanding litigation with Marlboro. We settled that. That was a great, great thing to put behind us. So within that, we had an estimate of how much we would pay for FY twenty-four. We paid that estimate. That was before the end of twenty, of fiscal twenty-four. So now that fiscal twenty-four has ended, Marlboro was able to sort of look at the final figures and send us a final bill. My understanding is we agree completely with that bill. We feel this is appropriate, and this is a normal part of the process. It's just a little bit weird because it's coming late relative to this, this whole IMA process. And so we need to pay a prior year bill of one hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars to fix FY twenty-four. And then, just now that we've seen a real, you know, a number of real years going back in the past, we have a good sense for what FY twenty-five will look like, and we're appropriating another hundred thousand dollars to that. And all of this is coming from the sewer enterprise fund, which is funded by the ratepayers and not by the property tax levy. Do I have that right?
That's perfect.
Okay, very good. I'm not volunteering to present this at town meeting.
You just did.
Anybody have any, any questions on, this is Article One. Procedurally, Tim, are we going to vote this in one, as one item, or are we splitting this vote in some?
We've been talking to counsel about whether it's a, a, a split motion for one and for two, because one requires a simple majority, the, the prior year bill requires nine tenths.
Yeah.
So procedurally, we'll work at, work through the moderator and counsel to get to probably a broken up few motions.
Okay. Excellent.
And this, and Article One does go to what we've already put in town meeting in May, that said we had the money set aside. This is just to finish it up, right?
Yeah, your rates have always been reflective of what you would have paid in anticipation of the settlement and a new IMA. So the, the money you've been raising all along is available.
Right, but, I mean, we already had a town meeting. I thought we already had that article.
So town meeting, why don't you explain some?
Certainly, Mr. Chairman. So the town meeting article, the approximately seven point six million dollars, that was to pay prior, prior year's bills. So the settlement agreement with Marlboro addressed short billings from the town to Marlboro for all the years in litigation. We continued along the prior IMAs protocols throughout the litigation process. Once the litigation ended under settlement, the agreed amount was that seven point five number. That was what that article was.
Okay, all right, then that is different, okay.
Did I see any other hands up?
So is it two votes?
So Article One.
And town meeting will be broken into two.
Oh, oh, yeah.
Because of the, the number it's required for it to pass. Obviously, we've got nine tenths for both, that's great, but if one were to fail, we want, we want them both to pass, but one's a simple majority and one's nine tenths.
The fire station building project is nine tenths?
No, no, this is all, this is all sewer enterprise fund Article One that we're talking about.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, there are two appropriations within that, one for prior year, one for current year. Prior year at a special time meeting requires nine-tenths majority. In theory, we could do it with one simple motion and cross our fingers to get for a nine-tenths, and that's for, for you to work out with the moderator.
We'll reconsider.
Yeah.
What, what majority do you need for the fire station building project?
That's a, for borrowing.
It's a borrow, it's two-thirds, yeah.
And that will be written on the warrant?
What?
Or the moderator will say this?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's, that's, does have to be part of the warrant, but it'll be part of the vote that it requires of two-thirds, which are.
Okay.
Jason, is that, is that two-thirds, or is that a simple majority? I thought Andy had told me that it was a simple.
The ballot election's a majority, but the appropriation would have to be two-thirds.
Yeah.
For, as a borrowing authorization.
All right, so Article, let's finish with Article One, the sewer enterprise fund. Any other questions on that? Okay, Article Two, the only other article on the, the warrant is the fire station building project. Again, we've mentioned this number, forty-one million, three hundred sixty-four thousand, nine ninety-two. It's written, looks like right now, you know, very clearly a not-to-exceed. It's always going to be a not-to-exceed anyway. It's a practical matter that, you know, appropriate a money, amount of money at town meeting, you can't spend more than that.
Correct.
And so that's, that's that item and the rest of this language. And I imagine the actual motion at town floor would be contingent upon approval of the debt exclusion on November fifth, right?
Yeah, correct.
Yeah.
Is there some reason that isn't written in it?
Typically, articles are written flexibly, so in theory, if Jason found a way to fund forty-one million dollars within the levy limit, you know, we could do that.
Yeah.
In this case.
We don't have our free cash yet this year.
Yeah.
I mean, no free cash.
Next year.
I mean, reality is not, but that's, I, I think it's always written flexibly here, and then it gets precise at the floor in the actual motion at town meeting. here and then it gets precise at the floor in the actual motion at town meeting.
So we're going to see down the motion then beforehand or that's going to be said?
Yeah.
The motion, both, let's interrupt, but the article and the motion have already been developed by bond counsel for that total amount.
Right.
So just to give the notice of inhabitants, this notice and then we can have, you know, we worked on the motion today and we can have that motion for town meeting available as early as tomorrow morning.
Okay.
But it says the same number.
Yeah, I know, I'm not really looking at the number as much as just the wordage because in the last time that this happened, it, that a large amount of money came forward, it said, it said, "Appropriation by raising borrowing provided however, appropriation under this article shall be contingent upon a successful debt exclusion vote under the provisions of Proposition 2 and 1/2 so called at the November 2024 state election." So that was already in one. I would assume that it would be in this one as well, if that's what you're going to do.
Yeah, I mean, we need to execute this tonight and this is what's before us and this is what bond counsel is recommending, so.
Yeah, for the warrant, it's a, the motion.
Right.
Really separate, but it'll include whatever it's legally required to include, it's going to include because it won't be valid unless it is.
All right, so.
But the article, the way it is, is to give notice that you're going to vote to authorize to borrow that amount. The motion will saddle the details of how that warrant will occur under Proposition 2 and 1/2.
Okay. Because I mean, I just, I just want to do the legal stuff right, so.
Yeah, again, we're going to rely on bond counsel for both, the Article Number 2 and the motion for Number 2.
Well, having a limit on the sum is really what my concerns were.
Yeah, I added the not to exceed. I went to bond counsel with that.
Yeah, I did see that.
So that's the modification from the original one from, over the weekend.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on Article 2?
And then, excuse me, you have two reports from appropriations committee and financial planning.
Yep.
That were attached Friday as well.
Yep. I give a lot of credit to both of them. The financial planning is the one I saw first. They did a very thorough job looking through a lot of the history on that. Honestly, it's a, it's a really good, just lesson in the process, not just looking at the numbers. They did a great job. And so my understanding, I know they both voted to recommend the project. Appropriations was unanimous. Financial planning, it was one in opposition. This board isn't voting tonight on recommending or not, but before town meeting, it'll be our next meeting, we will take a vote to recommend both of these articles as we do typically for, you know, prior to town meeting. If there are no other questions, the next thing we do is we execute the warrant. So that would be inserting, you know, the final language and then I assume Tim or Linda has some stuff for us to sign or, you know, will come in very soon to do that. I'm sorry, I see a question. Yeah, sure, come on up.
Is there a folder up there?
Just wanted to make a public comment on the.
Question? Yeah, absolutely.
Of the Article 2.
Yep.
Jacob Jones, 106 Green Street.
Hello again.
I wanted to say a couple of positive things. I, I went to several of the fire station building committee meetings, some in person, some, nobody saw me, but I was behind the screen. And I did, after speaking with a few members of the committee, I did start to hear a lot of, a lot more questions about cost impacts on the taxpayer and I was really appreciative of that, including some questions that we hear today from this board about impact on the taxpayer, which I'm very concerned about. Also, I had spoken with the chief about comparables and the, for fire station costs, and I did see in the materials that were released recently that there was some more information about comparable projects and that, I'm just saying, thank you for that additional information. Also, thank you, you know, I guess to the other committee, but that I had, you know, I was very concerned when I saw those numbers, 45 to 49. The fact that we're now talking about 41 and change gives me some comfort. I will say, for conclusion of this comment, is that going forward for similar large public building projects, I would really like to see instruction to the, whatever committee is over it, that they start out with a budget idea, that we don't give a blank check to the designers, which was done in this case and they had the opportunity several times to talk about a budget. And so when I hear our good finance, financial director, I forget Jason's title, talk about that we are, that we are modeling, he said, $45 million for the Peaslee School and that's supposed to give us all some comfort here in the amount of taxpayer burden over the next, we're talking 30 years stacked onto 30-year notes, onto 30-year notes. I mean, we're going to be three fifths of the life cycle of this fire station when it's going to be breaking down, needing maintenance. Many people here won't even be here anymore, I will, and we're going to be still paying for it. In addition to, when I heard the 45 million for the Peaslee School, the thought that I came into my head was that sounds a lot like the $17 million for the fire station that the town was told about five years ago. I don't put any faith in a $45 million guesstimate, no offense to anybody, for, for a school, given what schools are costing these days. So when we're looking at the amount to the taxpayer, I, as a taxpayer here in this town, I am uneasy about the tax burden to the taxpayer in this town compared to what we receive. So I think that always we need to be cognizant of that. I'm unhappy that this thing costs 41 million or give or take, but I'm at the same time happy with some efforts that have been done to go rein it back in from the 49, 45 to 49 range. Final comment that I will make is that while I've given some good compliments to our good fire chief, I've also heard the argument that if this isn't passed at town meeting, we're going to be here next year with a 10% higher number. And to me, that sounds like a scare tactic. And I don't like the scare tactics to be able to extract my money. And if I hear those kinds of scare tactics, I'll be saying at town meeting that I don't like those kinds of scare tactics. But I think if it's a justified project and this is the best we can do, then I, you know, I haven't decided yet if I'm going to support it, but definitely some work has been made in the right direction and I appreciate that. Sorry for the long comment.
No, I appreciate that. I'll address, just a couple of things that might be informative to you or you can sit, whatever you want. For the $45 million for the Peaslee project, that is the rough estimate of the town's share, so I think you were anticipating roughly a $90 million project?
Yeah.
Which is more in line?
More like what I would.
Yes, yeah. So the state pays roughly kind of sort of half of something like that.
Exactly that, and I just wanted to clarify that point. I did say we modeled $45 million of debt, but that would be similar to a 50% reimbursement from the MSBA program. So again, we are modeling a $90 million project in five, six years and expecting a 50% reimbursement from MSBA as part of that model. So it's, we weren't modeling a $45 million building, we are modeling a $90 million building. So I'm not sure, it's still significant regardless, but I just wanted to clarify that point.
Yeah. So the state of Massachusetts provides significant cost sharing for schools and libraries and zero cost sharing on just about everything else. So that's why we're not talking about getting 50% back from the state for a fire station because they don't do that. Yeah, you know, we, we ask every year and that's the answer we get. And the other piece I'll, I'll address is being able to set a number, set a budget at the beginning. It's really impossible to set a number at the very beginning because you really don't know what you need. So the process that we will, we are, actually tomorrow night is the first feasibility committee meeting for Peaslee. And so that's the very beginning of that and that's going to probably take a year or more to go through that process. At the end of that, we'll then have an idea for what needs to get built and we'll get a cost estimate on that. And it's feasibility, it's the same process that we went through with the fire station project several years ago. So we concluded that in 2019 and that was, you know, roughly $18 million was the estimate at that point. If we had been able to acquire the land right away and get started right away, that would have been the budget that we would have started with and that's the normal process. We had this five-year gap in there because through no fault of anyone in this room, it just took a long time to buy the land and we had COVID. And so as a result of that, you know, what was an $18 million project became a larger project going in. Where I think we probably could have done a little bit better is at the very beginning of that process, gone to the project manager and say, hey, that $18 million project from 2018, 2019, what would that cost now? And we would have been better prepared for what this would have been. In retrospect, we did have him do that and it came up to match what we've got now. I hope that provides at least a little clarification, Jacob.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Great, thank you. Chief?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention, I've heard several times, a threat tactic of saying we're going to be back again. No, it was never the intention. The committee discussed what our Plan B would be, which wasn't me, it was the committee discussed what our Plan B would be and our Plan B would be to come back with the same project. We didn't put any next to it. It's just a basic project and we would come back and our assumption would be prices would increase. Could be 4%, but it certainly in no way was ever a threat tactic, not meant that way. Simply when we're asked what the Plan B is, that's what the committee had talked about and that's what we decided.
Thanks, Chief.
I know I wouldn't be very popular for saying what I might say right now, but operationally, we would have to look at a reduction in the fire department if we don't do this, right? Because you can't operate in the place it wants to be if you, especially if you get a grant to hire eight more people. So we'd have to modify operations and we don't, we've done, it probably was talked about way back when, but not of recent. We've never, we've never talked about it and it's a horrible thing to think about, but we, that would be the next step. We would have to modify some aspect of EMS, you know, and fire service. It, it has to be looked at because you, you just can't be in the space here. And I know I'll be very unpopular for saying that, but I love the guys, you know? My father was in fire service, I'm with you. But it's not, we got to modify it if you're not going to do it. So I'll break the egg, sorry.
Good, thanks, Tim.
Yeah, and, and I would just say, you know, seeing the videos and touring the building, I mean, the, the firemen are a lot tougher a bunch of people than I am, but, you know, I would say the conditions that they're working in, that they're in that building, you know, some could describe as scary. You know, they, you know, they're, they're not asking for a building because, right, it's a, it's a nice to have, it's, it's a deed for them to have safe living and working conditions that the current building doesn't offer, so.
So I've got a couple, two questions, two things. First, just to, just to get back to that, what then will that building be, what's going to happen to that building? If it's not safe now, it shouldn't be safe for anybody else to be in. So is that building going to be removed? Because you can't use it the way it is because they can't be there the way it is.
Right, which is, which is.
Can't operate as a fire station is what he's saying. We've got a lot of stuff in there.
He's saying it's unsafe, he's saying it's unsafe and all that, right?
It's unsafe to use as a fire station.
Right.
It could be used for something else. It would obviously have to be really cleaned substantially to get rid of all the stuff that is built in there.
Right, cleaned, cleaned and renovated, could you play basketball or have a beer in there? Maybe, I don't know. I mean, that's stuff to come down the road to the board and then, you know, maybe the private sector people make an offer or we do a RFP or, you know, so that, that's certainly down the road, right? It may, it may not be to your, to your point, that I'm not sure.
Yeah, that's, I mean, that's something.
As a fire station, it's, it's a stretch.
So the, yeah, the town office's feasibility study committee looked at that building in addition to all of the others, so they have some real good information on that. On the assumption that this project passes at the town meeting and at the ballot, then, you know, I would suggest that we start earnestly on the process of figuring out the reuse of that building and have that figured out before we have moved, moved the fire station.
Amongst other buildings, too.
Yeah, yeah, we have, we have quite a collection of buildings to figure out. Deputy Chief?
So probably shouldn't come as a surprise, but there will be video coming out all about that. What the ideas are going forward, what the limitations are for that project, so that'll be coming out.
Coming soon.
Yes.
Thank you.
So second question that I had is going back to the Article 20 originally, the fire station design and land acquisitions. Maybe Jason can help with this one. So at that time, that article asked to have $3,500,000 to acquire land located and to pay for the owner's project manager services and the architectural services for the new fire station. And I see an amount here of, what is it? One, was it 1,654,000 for design? So that, was that what was broken down in this original Article 20 where there are like three different figures? Was there the figure for the land, a figure for the management services and a figure for the architectural services?
The, there is different phases of the design that, that were paid for from the $3.5 million. I'm rounding up, it's, it's a dollar short of $3.5 million, but there, there was not enough within the $3.5 million to fully design the building. There's still the design phases that, that are to come from, from the new authorization built into the $41 million budget.
And, but did the, there's actual breakdown, I can get it later, you don't have to talk about now.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have it with me, but yes.
So do you, offhand, do you know what the difference was? Like this was a difference that was left over at 1,600,000 or no? Because this is coming out as a negative, so this was an additional.
See what paper you're looking at, I might be able to answer that question.
I think maybe you're, you're talking about the sources of funding for the three and a half million dollars and there is a transfer that was from surplus proceeds from the Lincoln Street School project that were transferred in?
Yeah, that was 1,000, I mean, 1,383,000.
Yeah, so those were simply, that was simply sources for the three and a half million dollars. So the, the three and a half million dollars was made whole by borrowing plus that transfer in from a bond for the Lincoln Street School project.
Right. Yeah, because I mean, I'm just, when you're, you know, obviously when you're trying to balance everything, you're saying, okay, how much, how much was actually set aside for that? How much was actually used for this new one and, and just to do the breakdown of it?
Yeah, so, so the three and a half million dollars from that article has been, we may not have paid all the bills yet, but it's fully encumbered and has been spent, basically.
Okay. And do we, are we have any more like the loan that we're paying on it or is that all done?
Oh, no, we are already paying debt service on the three and a half, the, the balance of that three and a half million dollars. That's already built into the '25 and our, our debt projections.
Okay, great, thanks.
And that, that $1.6 million is for the, the work related to design that we have now completed. So that was part of the three and a half million, the 1.6 is, it was the architect and the project manager and other things related to designing the building.
For the new one? Because the old, the old one must have had some, some layout for that, for the.
You mean the feasibility?
Yeah, well, when, when it went to the town meeting, you had pictures and everything else.
Yeah, that was $75,000, something like that. That was the feasibility study. They, they draw some pictures and they draw some boxes. It's not really architectural drawings at that level. But that's the first thing that you do and then you do, do more. And the three and a half million dollars that we appropriated a couple of years ago was, was to do the actual design drawings right through construction documents. So the actual bid specs are part of the work being done right now.
Right, so you're just adding that to this? So I'm just trying to make sure they're balanced.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, anybody have anything else? Okay, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve and execute the town meeting warrant.
Mr. Chair, I move the board vote to approve and execute the October 7, 2024 special town meeting warrant.
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor, raise hands. Anything else? Okay. I can see that as unanimous in favor. Thank you very much, everybody.
You want to sign as you go, or?
Um-
George?
Yeah, it's probably good.
Everyone's okay with that?
The National Grid one is in there as well, as well as-
Okay. Okay, thanks.
Mr. Chair, the deed's in there, too. Don't sign that.
Don't sign that. Okay.
To your vote on it.
Right. Right. Okay.
But the National Grid one, you can sign, because you already acted on that.
Okay. All right, moving along, we've got some ARPA decisions to make. First one up, we have a public art plan from the Northborough. It's a joint request from the Northborough Arts Council and Northborough Cultural Council for $34,833. Anyone from the Cultural Council and Arts Council like to come forward?
Absolutely.
Great. And do you want me to bring in Suzanne?
Yes, please.
Okay. Suzanne, I'm bringing you in as a panelist. Is there anyone else you're expecting remotely?
No.
That's it. Okay.
Drop this off and get the most free.
Okay, thank you. Suzanne, if you'd like, you could turn on your camera, but you don't have to. It's up to you. Hey, there you are. Good to see you.
First, I'd like to thank the board.
Sure.
Yeah, we can hear you, Suzanne. That's great.
Okay. Why don't you introduce yourselves? And it might be helpful for the board and the public to describe Cultural Council and Arts Council, because the Arts Council-
Suzanne will be doing that as part of the presentation as well.
Great.
Okay, so my name is Teri Underwood. I'm the chair of the Northborough Cultural Council. We are one of 329 cultural councils in the state of Massachusetts. So, the towns that choose to have these boards review grants, we are under the umbrella of the Massachusetts Cultural Council. And so, their main job is to review applications for grants, and then a team of five or more people, which are volunteers from a town, will review them and sort of dish out the money, so to speak. What we've been doing is really gone above and beyond that, and to do more things in the town, festivals and some public art projects. People who are on the Cultural Council, there's, each term is three years. You can serve a maximum of two terms. So, I'm going to be aging out, and so, shameless plug for volunteers here to join in the fun and help make the look and feel of a town. So when you age out, you get to be someone like Bick Nguyen, who is now going to introduce herself and describe the Northborough Arts Council.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Bick Nguyen, 15 Copley Drive, Northborough. And I'm the president of the Northborough Arts Council, which is a nonprofit that we established a year ago. And we are the funding arm for the Northborough Cultural Council, basically that. We are friends of the NCC. You might ask, why are we called the Northborough Arts Council? Why don't we call ourselves the Friends of? It's a popular question, so I'll address it here, given the opportunity. So, when you go onto the Attorney General's website to look up nonprofit corporations, and we did that as we were establishing ourselves and creating our bylaws, if you search for Friends of, you will get a limited number. You'll get like about half a dozen Friends of. They're all like in Northborough. We love the terminology. So, we're quite curious. I'm like, what, what are the other Friends of of the other organizations called? Because we know who they all are, and we have been working with them to help us establish our bylaws. So, we look them up, and you look up Arts Council, and you get about 300. So, we wanted to make sure that we were part of the search when somebody was looking for Arts Council, that Northborough comes up. So, it, it's, it's not intuitive as to why we're called the Arts Council, but it makes sense from an establishment perspective. So, we had to make that happen in order to make ourselves searchable and, you know, for, I suppose, other Friends of councils to model after. And we modeled ourselves after the Northampton Arts Council and quite a few other ones. Actually, we, we researched all of them. We took all their bylaws, and then we, we've got, we took, we did the best of the best. So, we are also made up of all volunteers. Half of our volunteers were previous NCC members. So, we have that connection there. So, we, we really hope to just continue on with the legacy and, but provide the freedom of being able to raise money and fundraising for all the events that we both collectively want to do.
Thank you.
Do you have the slides up, Mitch?
I will bring them up. I, you have them, you have them?
We gotta lose this visual.
Okay. I can, I can share them from mine, or you've got them, you've got them there? Okay.
Can I ask just a question?
Absolutely.
Because you've come in a year, since a year that you've been here, and I, when I was reading, it says the Northborough Arts Council acts as the fiduciary agent for the Northborough Cultural Council on the public arts campaign. So, that's your function is to, to raise money so that they can get the art projects that they plan to do. Is that correct?
Yes.
So yours is, yours is strictly on financials, right?
Suzanne Cox, 20 Warren Drive. So, in addition to financial, we also offer resource assistance, not just financial resources, but human resources in the guise of program management assistance. So, as Teri mentioned, the Cultural Council is a more of a revolving door by state mandate, where a lot of the expertise that was formerly on the Cultural Council now resides on the Arts Council. And through time, that would continue to happen. So, we also offer management, program management assistance for the public arts sectors programs that NCC does. So, not only from a financial standpoint, but from a resource standpoint as well.
So, this, this program management assistance. So, why would Cultural Council need that, though, since they're supposed to take care of the grants and the arts? That's what their main thrust is, or your main thrust, unless, I didn't get a chance to look it up to see what your, what your actual setup was on the state.
It's basically due to the, the scope of the project. Sometimes they're so large that the few members that they have, maybe five this year, sometimes it's like four, sometimes it's seven, but, you know, it, it fluctuates, and their skill set doesn't enable them to execute on their own, so they need additional help. So, like, we need, we need volunteers all the time. So, one of the reasons why we did not go forward with Culture Fest in this 2024 is, it, it's a big undertaking, and it takes a lot of manpower to put that on. So, without, like, additional support from, like, the Arts Council, we have, like, say, 10 members who might come and volunteer and, and, you know, do whatever is required. It, it's not possible for the NCC alone as five, as a five-member committee to be able to execute on those programs.
And so, so you've got- I think it's important to note that we're not assisting on the granting function of the NCC. The NCC's function for giving grants that's funded from state to local, based on their priorities, but generally to local entities, that is not something the Art Council is assisting with. The program management that may be of assistance is areas on the public art. That is not part of the normal NCC granting cycle. But, these are things that are in addition to the normal granting cycle.
Okay, so I'm a little confused. That's why I'm continuing to ask the questions. When you were on the, on the Cultural Council, you didn't have this branch. How did you manage?
We did it all ourselves. We had more resources and people, and we did it ourselves. Since then, many of the people who led a lot of the major projects, not the granting, that still has to be held by the NCC, solely by the NCC. But on things like the mural, things like Go Outdoors, that was done by people who are no longer on the Cultural Council, that have now crossed over and joined the Arts Council as a way to continue lending their support to those programs, but on, as a nonprofit, which opens funding doors that the NCC is not able to access.
So, the, if I can continue that to hopefully answer part of your question. So, we work with however many volunteers that we have at the time, and sometimes people may come or go at the end of a three-year term, a six-year term, and, and whatever talent pool we have at the time. So, we may have some people who are used to heavy lifting and so forth, but it, I would be remiss in not mentioning that, over time, my predecessor was Selvi, Oyola, I'm sorry. I'm not used to being behind a mic. They, they had some really brave ideas, and they pushed forward, and you beg, borrow, and steal from the Boy Scouts and different groups, "Come join us, come help us, we'd like to do this." And it starts to build. And then, so you build more volunteers, and then you get braver to start on festivals. And so, when I met Selvi, which I didn't know she was recruiting me at the time, I was working for the cable TV station, and she said, "Come join us, come, come join the Cultural Council." What? And, and so, that's how it started. And it was a very small festival. And so, over time, things got bigger. The projects and ideas got bigger. And so, there have been ideas or seeds of ideas that have been growing. And so, over time, okay, let's put that in a wish, the stick notes on a wish list, and as opportunities, people, resources, whatever it is, we, we have visions, we have ideas that we can do. And as the pool of volunteers grow, or whatever the talent pool is within that group that particular year, then we will start doing things, or, you know, start, start creating something great. And so, what we do each year, we try to do a couple of things, the same, same thing for a couple of years, and then maybe people get tired of it, and, and we have new members that come on and get braver. So, as an example, we had our first open studios this year. That was really exciting. It poured rain, but we still did it, and we involved, it was a wonderful cross-pollination with businesses, with local artists, and some of those artists were, one was a young high school student, and he made resin wood boards, paired them up with one of the eateries in town. And, you know, that was, so that people, as they're, on a Saturday, as they're doing their chores, are going in and out of shops and really connecting people and artisans that would not have otherwise met. So, I'm passionate about this.
Well, no, we like that. Passionate about the arts, wonderful. I'm just, what I'm trying to do is figure out how you get somebody new, you get a new group in, and you've had some, many of the people in that, well, probably all the people in that group have been on the Cultural Council. And, and I, you know, it says that, that the Cultural Council is still the umbrella, that this group that's come in is under, under your directorship because that's how it was created. At least, that's what it says on this document. Is that correct?
I don't think it's formally under.
No, we're not, yeah. We, we have to be separate entities, because we are an official nonprofit, you know, registered with the IRS. So, so there's not an actual relationship there. It's, the relationship is more in the way of how we work. And the NAC is trying to support the vision that the NCC has always had, but not able to execute, because all of our past projects have really been actually small scale. You think, we think they're big, because we got the mural going, you know, we got the Culture Fest going. But in terms of spending, they have been small, because that's all we could afford to do. So, that's why we're here tonight to ask for, you know, a good chunk of money to make our long-term vision more of a now vision, and be able to execute on it now, because there's not an opportunity for us to ever do that, short of, of obviously, the NAC, you know, asking for federal grants, and that's the kind of stuff that we're trying to investigate now to, to get more money. But here's an opportunity for us to-
It may be helpful to think an analogous situation, maybe the Friends of the Northborough Library and the Northborough Library. That's who we also, from a, a relationship between two organizations, that's who we've modeled ourselves off as well. In addition to Arts Councils, from the Art Council perspective, we met a lot with the heads, and current and former heads of the Friends of the Northborough Library, and use that relationship and how they work hand in hand to support the library, as well as, they do things. They do the, the books sell themselves to raise money for the objectives of the library. So, that's a very, maybe an easy way to think of this relationship, very analogous to those two groups, or the Friends of the Senior Center and the Senior Center. Does that help?
It helps a bit, but, but I see this overlap, especially when it's not just the finances. It's, it's now, you're not just doing finances, but you're also doing the arts and the programs. So, that's where I'm wondering how, I don't think you'd have that in the other situations. Usually, the Friends do their thing to collect money, and then they, they donate money to-
There's a lot of substantial coordination between the library operations and the Friends of the Library. They're separate organizations, but they work very, very closely together. And certainly, the same is true of the Friends of the Senior Center and the Senior Center itself.
But doesn't the, doesn't the Senior Center say to the Friends, "We, we need us and so"? And then the Friends go, "Okay, we'll get it for you"? Or is that different?
They can also come up with their own ideas, and they certainly do a lot of their own fundraising. That's, that's one area that I see as being different, is the Cultural Council is primarily funded by the money that comes in every year from the state, a couple thousand dollars, that, that the Cultural Council can then go through and decide how to allocate. And some years, they've, you know, they've done real, real important projects that are amazing that you were able to do with that amount of money, where typically a Cultural Council doesn't go out and seek grants and do large sustaining projects. Also, the Cultural Council is designed to be changing every year. As Teri said, every, after six years, you're done.
Right.
You, you term limit out.
Term limit.
And so, there is built into that an intent of new ideas, new ideas, new ideas. When there is an idea that has perhaps gelled in the Cultural Council that is good for the community long-term, that's why it's good to have a, an Arts Council there to say, "Okay, we've created this project. We want this to happen, you know, every year forever, here." And then, then that can be something that the Arts Council, which is not limited by a term limit or anything like that, it's a separate nonprofit, could then revisualize that and think of, okay, how's, how's a way to make that sustainable permanently, where then new people will come onto the Cultural Council and come up with some new ideas.
I just, you know, it just seems to me like it's just, we moved over here, and now, now we're going to do it from here.
And, and to some, yeah, as I said, to some extent, that is accurate.
And then it's like, well, you can be over on the side, you know, you can, you can come and throw us something, but we're pretty much the-
But the Cultural Council, yeah, but the Cultural Council isn't then doing nothing. They're doing new things. So, we, I imagine, we'll see some new things, you know, over the next several years from the Cultural Council.
We do, we do either work collaboratively, like, like, let's say we want to do another Culture Fest. That, that requires a lot of manpower, so we would do that together. But they could all, you could also do your own project, like Flowerful Chairs, that the NAC had nothing to do with. And the NAC also had the Art of Giving Night, had nothing to do with the NCC, because we were trying to fundraise with our event. So, we could have, you know, separate art artistic type events that just benefits the community overall, whether we do it or they do it. It's just, our goal in when we're doing something is to raise money, to raise a lot of money, so that we can then pass on over to the NCC to fund their projects if they're short of money.
Thank you for these questions. This is, this is all really great, because this is what I'm saying. Not everybody has heard of the Cultural Council, and it's something across our state. And not everyone, and being one-year group, I was nervous at the beginning, Teri Underwood, 40 Maple Street.
It's okay.
Okay.
Well, you're here as a presenter.
So, what I want everyone to know about us is that we're here for the community, and we want the community to have a say. So, part of our drivers that come from the Massachusetts Cultural Council, where we receive our guidelines and priorities, they require us to do certain things. And one of those is a survey. So, we will survey through the town, through the benefit of using the town website, what would you like to see more of? Have, how did you hear about us? Different things. And so, that becomes our drivers to help us when we receive grants, what kinds of things do you want to see do? So, the, the grant, with the grant, when I talk about the grants, I want to differentiate that, because that's a good thing that you pointed that out. The, we receive, we, along with all the other cultural councils, 329 of us throughout the state, receive money that we are supposed to give out to-
To weak grants.
To the community. Yeah. So, it's PTOs, it's the Senior Center, it's the library. They brought in somebody that did this beautiful Chinese calligraphy, and it's open to the public. But the PTOs will have something for maybe olive gray date, or something that, African drumming one year. Senior Center, they had chair hop, in, you know, dancing, chair yoga, whatever, different things. We try to spread the money out so that we can hit enough generations, interests, all levels of what's going on, and even community affairs with the concerts. So, you know, we cannot, we don't receive enough money to fully fund really much of anything, but we are able to give enough money to get things going and help support this. And this is, this is what we do. This is where, where the, I'm, I don't know if I'm singing to the choir here, but the arts is really important to our culture in Northborough, what we do and who we are. This is our culture, so we get to determine that. And so, again, shameless plug for volunteers, help us create that. You know, what do you want it to look like? What, what do you want?
And so, so what the state gives you, you are supposed to, you are supposed to then give to, right, that's separate than this. You're supposed to give that out to different groups that can benefit from some arts experiences.
Correct.
And then-
Yes.
Would, would NAC give you money to continue to do that and giving that to other projects? Or would that not be available? Would you have to, for you- Would you have to, for you, and I'm assuming, again, this is all, I'm just doing research right as we speak.
Yes, please do.
So when you, when you did the door, not, when, you know, NCC did the doors and they sold the doors. They made money to, to, well, hopefully they made a profit, but you know, if they didn't make a profit, we'll have to teach them how to make profits in the future. So that profit, what happens to that? Do you, would that go into the pile of the grants for other people? Or would that go into the pile for the next thing you want to build?
So I'm just, I'm just going to say.
Can I touch on this real quick?
Suzanne, sure.
The money that MCC gives all the LCCs, of which the Northboro Cultural Council's one, must be granted out to the priorities, organizations and projects that meet the priorities that the LCCs have published. That money has to be spent and granted out. That is not the money we're discussing when we discuss public art programs. Those are different projects and different sets of money. So you were talking about Go Outdoors. Go Outdoors did not make a profit. Selling the doors was a way to offset the cost of giving money to the artists to paint them in the first place as a way to allow us to give more money back to individual artists in the beginning. We had an idea of what they would bring in so that we were able to give more money to artists to paint the doors, which is part of the overall mission of the public art campaign by LCC to support local artists. So the.
Think of it as a stipend.
Granting money is something totally different and not in any way related to this project, these, the public art programs or the monies we're discussing. That's mandated by MCC and how it is dispersed locally is mandated by MCC.
So many letters.
If it's all right, I'd like to start to shift this more towards the actual grant request. And maybe a way of doing that is to talk about why both of you are before us tonight. Is particularly why the, the Arts Council is making this request that we've talked about before, that if we grant ARPA money to a town entity, we know that the contracts need to be in place by the end of December and then they have a couple more years to spend it. If we grant money to a separate entity, as we've done to the Historical Society and, and a couple of other groups, they have different rules associated with them that, that they would sign a grant agreement and then we could give them the money and then they have two years to work on that, including generating the grants. So the type of proposal that they were working on together became clear. There was no way that, that they could have 100% of it, including contracts and everything in place in the next three months. So they knew they had to do it through the Arts Council because the cultural council is part of the town. That's a committee that we appoint. The Arts Council is a completely separate nonprofit. They are governed by the same ARPA rules as the Historical Society and everything else. And so they have more financial flexibility as far as the scheduling goes. So that's why they're before us tonight and why the request is to grant the money to the Arts Council and not the cultural council. But they have worked on this together and they will work on the implementation of it together.
Where did you learn all this? You get it down pretty well. I'm just asking for the first time.
In my prior life, when I lived in another town, I was a member and chair of a cultural council there. So I did my six years and aged out of that and learned a little bit about it then. And then I came here and I saw the amazing cultural council here that made me just jealous of all of the amazing things. I mean, really, you've done a great job. And, and the same goes to, you know, all, all three of you that have, you know, been part of this. And, and I've said many times how impressed that I have been.
Thank you for the support. I have to say that, our wonderful liaison, Julianne, but everybody, I mean, and the town administration. I'm there often enough. How do I do this? Where does this?
And then a couple of years ago, I heard you were trying to form this arts council. And like, you already have a thing. And then somebody described what the, that was like, wow, you could do even more. It's really, it's really impressive. So it does make sense that the two organizations exist because they each serve a related purpose. So if the board's okay, I'd love to get into the presentation of the request because we, we have to decide this and we still have other agenda items tonight. Although I appreciate the background, it's, it's helpful to understand why the money is going to one organization and the other. But they're both here making the same request.
So they're both, you're both, you're both working, in this, in this project, you're working in tandem. Is that what we're talking about?
On the execution of the projects, but the NAC will be the holder of the funds if work is so granted.
Almost like a vendor. I'm, I'm trying to think of a word to describe it. And the reason is because as a cultural council, because we are part of the town, we only would have until the end of this year.
To use the money?
So that really, it doesn't make sense. It's just not doable to do public art projects. And so, you know, I look to the NAC as the public art project, okay, now we can get going and do some of these bigger things because by doing it this way, it gives us flexibility with an additional two years to do something that's more thought out and quality. So to 2026.
Okay, great. No, that's good.
Okay, all right. I, I'd love to see the rest of your presentation so, so the board can hear about the request. Suzanne, you're, you're going to lead that show? So I think you probably see the slide that we have up. Why don't you give us guidance as far as next slide, next slide?
Well, the very first one that we classified, the only point I want to make is that the, we're collaborating to refine and continue the original NCC five-year public art campaign. Five years ago, the NCC put forward a public art campaign to support the master implementation plan and to align itself mainly with using public art as a way to realize part of the objectives of that plan. And the document you have on page four and through page five, it kind of outlines how public art can be used to meet some of those objectives. Basically land use, enhancing the downtown, the future use and the visibility of the downtown area, making the economic development. There's a lot of research to how public art impacts public economic development. So on page four, it kind of talks about why the plan was originally written back in 2021. It was a way to say, we can help the town realize the goals of the master plan with public art, something we know how to do, we know all about. And we'd like to bring that to bear as our contribution to the overall trying to reshape the placemaking capabilities of the downtown area and the main corridors in town. So that's how it began. So it was a five-year plan. The first, this slide right now outlines what we did year one to three, and that's 2001 through this year. So we kicked off the whole public art campaign with Go Outdoors Northboro. And it was a collection of painted upcycled doors that reflected the kind of the vibrant atmosphere of our town. We put out a call to artists saying, you know, what do you think of when you think of going outside our area? What does it look like? What does it mean to you? And we got a myriad of just amazing panel doors painted and installed at McAfee Park during the spring of 2022. It was a really big success. It was very modestly funded. We barely paid the artists because we had very few funds as a cultural council. But it went really well. We followed that up with a request by the then-town manager who had, someone had given the town or made an offer to the town to fund putting a mural up on the new county common. We took that project on because again, that's our area of expertise. And we worked with the artists to put out requests. We worked with the town during Applefest to see what they like and put out samples. And everybody voted on the one that they wanted. The one that's there is the one that got the most vote during the Applefest street fair. We followed that up the following year with Go Outdoors again because it's, it was a very modestly priced program, but had a big impact and we heard a lot of positive feedback from it. So in 2023, we brought it back, Go Outdoors 2023. We did it again in 2024, as well as brought forward another program called Flowerful Chairs. Our lovely liaison had the idea and it was, it was brought to fruition. And many people have seen the chairs around town and another amazingly wonderful program that's added a lot of vibrancy. You'll notice in the plan that there are three types of programs that we put together in this overall campaign. Temporary or engagement programs that we did at Culture Fest where people come together and create art for the day. Temporary exhibits and permanent installations. The plan had a mix of all and the design was to have a mix of all. There's very different price points on temporary and engagements versus permanent installations. So the, the mural is an example of a permanent installation. The doors and the chairs are more of an example of temporary exhibits. They generally cost a fraction of what the permanent ones cost. And that's why we did more of those from a financial, and they were very popular. Any questions on what we've done year one to year three?
How were those funded?
So the NCC had done fundraising by bake sales. Over the years, we've gone outside Roach Brothers and sold cupcakes. And this is the NCC before the Arts Council existed and done. We also were able to get some granting money from the state. We were able to put in for a festival and project grant from the state, independent of the money we're supposed to give out that funnels through the NCC. Anybody, a nonprofit or an LCC can write for a $2,500 grant every year. We've done that every year. So it's been a combination of those sinus funds. The town gives us a modest amount of money, those kind of funds. We just added them all up and believe it, we made, we ran the doors on less than $2,000 every year. Okay, so part of the, the selling of the auction of the doors was to put back in it. So we were able to run very modest, extremely modest programs. We borrowed a lot, all the hardware we borrowed from the city of Medford. We, we got the doors for free. We had someone go to salvage and get them. So we were able to put together very, public art with very little financial investment because they were temporary and that does change it.
And we strip and sand them and prime them ourselves and, and mount them in the ground ourselves. And so we just find a way because.
And our first bake sale got us almost $1,000.
It's good, but they're beautiful. I mean, just, just looking at what's there from the slide, it's, it's, they're wonderful.
Yeah, I invite people to go see these things. So when we put our notice out on Facebook or in other ways, people, you've got to go see these things. It's fun.
You can see three of the chairs on my front porch. I won three auctions for these chairs. And one of the doors, yeah, yeah, any of my Zoom meetings, you'll see that door that was up there, Northboro doors, and still in my office.
Best customer.
So I think, you know, local businesses have, you know, doors in, in places and, and people's homes. There's one on 135 as you drive down in someone's front garden that we see every day now from the last rendition of Go Outdoors. So it really has enhanced and them staying around has also enhanced the, the entire atmosphere and just the, the look and feel of our town, even if it's a small improvement. Any other questions about the past projects we've done? I do, I do welcome, I do encourage you to take a look on the supplemental material on page eight. I think it's important that you see the power of what we can do for the downtown area by looking on page eight of the document and looking at the building prior to the mural being done. So again, here, even with the funding that was offered by a private donor, we did all changes to that building ourselves. NCC members totally re-faced that building and covered the, the windows and made it paintable. So that's the kind of stuff that we've done without any costs. But I, I think I would encourage you to look at the difference between the before and the after and understand the power that we can achieve with some of this public art for meeting the goals of the downtown revitalization. Next slide, please.
No.
I think this one.
So that leaves us for year four and year five, which were 2025 and 2026 of the original plan that the Arts Council and the Cultural Council are collaborating to complete. The remaining projects for funding consideration are three permanent exhibitions. So they are the ones like the mural that will have the most impact on the town, but also carry the largest price tags. And that's why we're here hopefully to solicit support for funding of those projects. So I think with our temporary ones and the mural, we've shown that collaboratively, the people on these two organizations can really make an impact. We're looking for the, the funding support to continue that for the next two years and complete the five-year original plan. Working together, we've redone the, the programs, the three remaining permanent programs to be the Seasons of Northboro, which is the, probably the easiest way to envision this is to think about Go Outdoors being permanent. Instead of being on doors, being our artist mural panels, that would be affixed to town buildings or pub, or private buildings. And the theme of it would be our town through the, the seasons. So we would have up to eight, maybe 10 panels put on the sides as you do in murals where you put mural panels on the side of buildings or freestanding on town property as a way to enhance the visual perspective, just like the mural does for the common. Okay? It's called Seasons of Northboro and I think the, a permanent version of Go Outdoors is maybe an accurate way to think, to think about it. If you turn to page 11 of your packet, you'll just see one possible example. This is not what it would be, but one possible example of, these are those panels, they're artistic panels that people put on buildings as a way to not paint on the, on the actual brick. So they're made, they're aluminum, not to get in the weeds, but they, they affixed to, to, to buildings and prevent you from having to actually paint on actual buildings so that they could be removed in five, 10 years' time and put on another building should buildings be relocated or as our town decides to move into different real estate. The next one is Apples Around Town. This is a, a project to, and if you look on page 12, there's sort of a, a, a view of what Franklin did. Instead of doing the freestanding apples, it's to take half apples and have them painted by local artists and affixed to buildings, both public and private. That's as a way to really add visual interest to some of our properties, but also, you know, a little bit of whimsy and fun for the younger population through town. It can be used for events through time, scavenger hunt kind of things where people are finding the apples. It can be grown over time. What's the initial project if it's favorable? You can see in the slide number 12, it's, it's a, it's a more of a fun way to use public art on our buildings and properties to add interest to the downtown area. The last one is to do a permanent sculpture. It's called the Love Northboro Sculpture. It's not necessarily love, so we don't want to go there. But the whole campaign is titled Love Northboro. So the theme would be, what do you love about Northboro? We envision putting a, a, a request for proposals to artists for them to tell us what a permanent sculpture looks like that reflects their love of our town. What is their love about Northboro? And we would be able to choose from different artists' proposals and decide which one to go forward with, just as you would a normal sculpture from sculpture artists. The vision, overall vision is, is that we create something analogous to the Boston Duckling, something that Northboro can identify with, either love or dislike, as most public sculptures are to some degree. But they're always thought about and they're always noted and they're always related to a space. And that's our objective. So a permanent sculpture to be placed on one of the, the, in front beside on one of our town properties, all around loving Northboro. And the best way to think about it, I. And, uh, the best way to think about it, I think, is to think about the Ducklings. Very simple sculpture, but so, so defines Boston in a lot of ways. Um, they get decorated every year, they, people do all sorts of stuff and there's a lot of relatability to them. So that's kind of what we'll be seeking with this. Any questions on the three remain projects from a concept standpoint that we're looking for in year four to, in four, year five?
I'm going to ask one question. Um, when we talk about the love sculpture, and I see pictures of you, you've done this before, I guess that was a sample, um, you're not going to use that same four-letter?
No, that's our intent. The intent of the photo here is to say that was somewhat, people identified with that in a crazy kind of way. Who knew? That thing traveled all over town. It went to the library for the Friends of the Library book sale. It went to the police station. It went to the fire station. People called and asked us to move that and Sylvie and I put it in a car, in the back of a large car and drove it around town where it sat in different places for several weeks until it was no longer, it's made us, it was made a styrofoam. We want to find something analogous to the way people connected. I don't know what that is and that's what we would put it out to artists to tell us what that would be, but we want that sort of connection. Who knew that something that was created for a day would make people get, people feel so connected to, but they did. So that's, that's what we would be going for and that's why that photo is there to say, the amount of selfies that were taken in front of that styrofoam thing and one day was, was overwhelming, let alone it's traveling around all the buildings. Um, so that's kind of what we're going for with this thing, something people will just rally around and want to have their photo taken in front of and identify with, similar to the Duckling. So it's included here as a way to say, that's kind of what we're going for, not the particular. We'd put that up for artists to come back with proposal and then we would make selections based on that or keep requesting proposals if we didn't, didn't like any of the selections that were, or proposals given.
All right. Cause there's just, I mean, the fact, the fact that it's, there's some internet intellectual property on this, cause Philadelphia has got the love thing and we can't do the same.
We're not, we're not talking about doing this thing. We're talking about using, um, we're talking about a project that resonates like it did. We're not talking about this particular sculpture. We would let artists come back with ideas for sculptures.
The fact that you recognize it as having sourced from Philadelphia, that's the kind of recognition we want. I think it's Cambridge, somebody has like a humongous bronze pear in the middle of their rotary. They did the exact same thing. They, they did research on the history of their town, which many years ago in the 1700s, they were pear, pear, uh, pear farms, uh, they were growing pear trees. So, so the artist took that and, and made this humongous pear and literally sits in the middle of the rotary and it broke up traffic and that was the desire because the, people were driving like crazy. So they now have a beautiful rotary, but the big pear, I've.
Should we be asking for a rotary?
I'll put in my play for a mastodon.
Yes, mastodon. Another.
But that's the idea. So if you can, um, I'm, I'm just going to try to summarize of, of what Suzanne's brought, what Bic has brought and what I'm trying to bring, uh, representing the Cultural Council is that over time, as we, and Lisa, you, you know, you, you asked some of these great questions, the ideas, the dreams, the projects got bigger, um, the doors, some of them, you know, wherever they come from, does anybody know anybody who's tearing something down? I mean, it can be as simple as that. And then, well, what can we do with it? So we'll have a crazy brainstorming session. How much money do we have? Who has, um, availability in their garage to store, um, sand, paint, whatever? And so we are constantly hauling stuff back and forth between, between our homes to do these things, but it's for the betterment of the community. And so what we hope to pass on as things grow bigger and, and ideas are supported is that we have this draw toward the center of town. You don't need, we, we have Tugus Apple Farm, we, we have some really interesting shops and, um, things here to offer. Yes, you can drive out west, Western Mass or go to other towns in Foxborough, see foxes or, um, Amherst and see other things, but why not stay here? We, we have some really good things. The hope is that we bring people in and are proud of what they have and who they are and, um, you know, go take that selfie, go, go sit in the town common. There are two chairs there. Go sit, go read, go get some pizza, go, go get an iced coffee and relax because it's our town, it's our culture.
Okay, great.
Um, I think there's another slide that has some funding details, because this is a funding request. I want to make sure we get that out of the way and, and we can make some decisions.
So these are the, um, this is the funding request we're asking for to complete the five-year, original five-year, um, public art camp, campaign. Two years, uh, three years are done, but these are the remaining two. These are the three projects that are permanent projects that we'd like to complete in the next two years. Um, the Seasons of Northborough, Apples Around Town and Loving Northborough Sculpture. Okay? Um, again, that's the name of the campaign, Love Northborough. So that's why it's, it's, it's there, but it's not any particular sculpture. It would be put out for bid for artists to envision, just like they, someone envisioned the pear. Um, we've also included, um, a, a target timeline of when the projects would come, um, leading with the Seasons of Northborough because that is, you know, something we've done already. It's, it's like a permanent version of the doors. So we have a lot of experience there from artists to, you know, um, everything about it. We have a lot of experience and that kind of thing. So this is taking it to a more permanent, making it a permanent exhibition. Um, so we're, we'd lead with that. The next one is the Apples Around Town coming through at the beginning of 2026. And then the largest, of course, is a permanent sculpture somewhere. And that obviously is going to take more time, um, and more resources. So that would be the one who, um, planning to come out in, um, the end of third quarter of 2026. The funding is represented here. Again, the size and the scope, you know, um, kind of go up as the intensity of the program goes up.
Thank you.
Any questions on the slide?
I just want to point out that, um, one of the members, Jen Tolman, is also on Master Plan Implementation Committee. So there will be coordination with all of the exciting things happening in town.
Okay. Any other questions?
Can we split it? Do we have to do all three pieces?
I, I think we should.
Well, we've got other things we have to pay for too, so.
So I, anticipating something like this was coming, I put onto my budget, if you will, of $35,000 for this exact project. Um, so we have, we have the funding allocated in that manner. Um, I think, you know, it makes sense, the, the way that you've presented this project as sort of three phases, three different projects, one, uh, able to do pretty quickly, one that takes a little bit longer and one that takes longer than that. Makes, makes some sense so that we would see, uh, you know, year after year after year, some, you know, something new each time. Um, so I, I really like this idea.
Thank you. I, I really hope that we can, um, show you the, how much impact we've had with the projects, especially the mural and the doors, um, the large-scale projects like the mural and, and what we can do going forward. So this is on the order of those. We had a private donor for that, um, but we're trying to, um, get the support to finish the, the plan. And I think it really will have an impact on how the downtown looks and, and, and the whole goal of placemaking in Northborough.
We, we also plan to engage the community. So get, you know, put it out there, like, here are five artists with the, you know, the sculpture. I mean, it's something that the town's going to live with. So you, you want like the majority of people going for something, you know, instead of your own personal judgment. So, um, anything that involves the town, just, just like when we did the mural, we had the kids vote, everybody loved voting for it. All the kids loved the owl, the owl with the hu- huge eyes. Thankfully that didn't pass, but, um, you know, but this, it's, it's not, it's engagement, not after the fact, but also before the fact. So it's not just after we produce it, then you're like, oh, you enjoy it, it looks nice. But is the process, the whole process of doing it is also good for the community.
And on our last slide, you see that. I think that's very important. So we did, won't do, we haven't and we wouldn't do anything in a vacuum. So many stakeholders are involved in this whole part of placemaking in our town and having all those stakeholders have, um, you know, um, share in their vision and how to realize it. Like we, we took four proposals for the mural to the, the Apple Fest, um, street fair and we sat there and had everybody vote. We had like 578 people vote of which of all the, the four mockups that we had done, which one did they want? So, and then we went with whoever voted, um, the one that got the most votes. It was straight, straightforward. That one won over the others, though we all had personal opinions on what we liked. Um, that's the one that was liked by most of the Northborough residents. So we would always follow that sort of model of community engagement on these programs, especially when, for the permanent programs, because, you know, that's something that everybody's, everybody being able to say what they think, um, really speaks about Northborough is important and we all have, art is a very subjective thing. So we will focus on the community and engagement on the projects, um, especially the larger, the sculpture one has to definitely be a community engagement one from what one's chosen of all the options, all the artist's proposals. So, and all stakeholders coming together and understanding, um, what's the best way to, to do that. Hence why it takes the longest, but building that collaborative process with, uh, the different departments in town on the public art program, I think is key.
Okay. Um, let, let's try to act on this. Um, I know I had said that I had put $35,000 on mine. You would put $50,000 for.
Well, that was my intent with the, with the whole idea of the grant to committees.
Sure. We can, we can split the cost on this if we want to. Um, about seventeen, five each. I'm good with that. Um, are we comfortable allocating the roughly $35,000? You have a question?
I'm okay with that. Can I, would it be possible to get an update of where the, I, and this might be on a spreadsheet just to see what other remaining money each of us have?
I did say something out yesterday.
Thank you. I missed that. Thank you so much.
Yep.
No, but I appreciate it. I appreciate all the thought that went into this and the ability to beautify Northborough and how it brings the community together. I just worry constantly about the cost. So I, I see the, the value of it. I appreciate all the work that's gone into it. It's just the money. I wish we had more of it. So, thank you.
Yeah, I'll, I'll certainly agree on, on the thanks to, you know, the, the previous work done and, and the thought and energy put into this. But I'll, to also go off of what Lisa said, there's a lot of competing priorities. Um, you know, there's a lot of, you know, just from the financial summit and the capital improvement plan, a lot of asks from departments for headcount and equipment and different things. Um, so that's sort of, you know, my hesitation, but, you know, certainly it would, you know, be funding from, from two members from, from their ARPAPOT. Um, one other question I have is a lot of this is centered around downtown, um, and downtown publicly owned buildings, which thinking of the three that will maybe be there, a new fire station, an old fire station and Four West Main. Um, and then I guess I have some question of, you know, if it was say all on Four West Main, is it, are you looking to put like the panels and the sculpture kind of centered there? Um, cause I, you know, an old fire station may not be there. The new one, we just built it. I don't know if we want to start putting stuff on it. Um, you know, it's all shiny and new. Uh, and, and then we have, right, money set aside to redo Blake Street. Um, how does this fit into that? You know, are we going to end up installing something that we're going to have to work around or move or take apart and cost additional funds if, you know, i- is there? So, so that's a question. And then another question is if one or of these projects wasn't to get funded, are there other funding channels or other plan Bs or, or no? I know that's a lot to throw out, but I'm just trying to get them out.
Let me, let me address your first one. With regard to where, if I may, where the, the, we did not include any of the details or even tried to get into the details of the specifics of where on some of the projects because, um, it was more about understanding and building a coalition for these projects. And then the second step is to work with the different stakeholders and understand where's the best one. We've had mockups in the public art domain in this plan of large murals in, in, in Asabet Park on the Big Knoll there, freestanding murals. We've had mockups of a whole bunch of stuff. A lot of things are possible. We can envision a lot. Ivy can make mockups of a lot of stuff, but it, it's, 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 it would behoove us to get the funding and then have the conversations of what is the best place to put it from everybody's perspective and marrying with the current plan, um, the implementation, the, the improvement as well as the plans for Blake Street, as well as plans for the other buildings. So we have a lot of property. We have libraries, we have parks, we have municipal buildings, um, schools. So there's a lot of choices and it would be something that we would work on collectively to find out what is the most appropriate. I mean, I'll just throw something out personally, though this is not a decision-making, I could see a huge mammoth sitting in front of the public library, you know? I love that idea. A huge sculpture of a mammoth because, you know, they found one here. But that's just one vision. There's, there's lots of ways we can envision stuff and I would imagine the process is going forward with what is possible and then working with, um, of those things that are possible, which one fits into the overall plan the best with, from all the plans of affecting downtown.
And if one project were to not be funded, Lisa, what, what is the plan for that? So that would be up to us if we wanted to move forward with that and the NAC would look to, uh, do, um, the grants applications, try to get the money to support it. But if it's, I mean, it's, it's quite a bit of money, so all of them, um, so we, we would just not do it. It would be unfortunate, but.
We really would, 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 we enjoy, the whole thing is meant to work together. The whole five-year plan that we have been working three years on and scraping and scrimping and selling cupcakes to make happen, we really, the whole plan is, you know, uh, would be lovely to get done. That's what I'm going to say.
I, I'd just like to say that I think that this, that both these groups, all of those people have quite a track record of making things happen and, and people really enjoying their projects, so.
Well, I, I don't think we doubt that at all. I, I think we, we have to have you do all the painting because of the, the talent that you held, but, um, I, I just, I just feel at this point, you know, I would, I would feel more comfortable doing two out of three. I just think that all three at this point is a long ask and I think that even though you put the money aside, there's an awful lot of other people that have, that have come forward and asked for things and, and I just think it's, I would feel more comfortable doing two out of three, but that's personal.
Let me try to convince you that this, and I, oh, you know what? You go ahead first.
Oh, Doug, do you have a comment?
Look, I love all this artwork downtown. It's great. Um, I just want to point out that we do have a sculpture now, the lion that's in front of Four West Main, so. Anyway, that's it.
I was, I was hoping that maybe you would comment on, um, how a town that shows that it's working together and is try, is, are doing things like this, um, attracts new people into town. And I don't know if there's any scientific evidence for that, but. The Mass Cultural Council has great, uh, data on its main website and it talks about, um, the health of the community can be indicated by other sidewalks maintained, but the vitality also and mental well-being with public art engagement, it brings people together and, um, I mean, you see art therapy being taught in schools, uh, and you see that used in a variety of ways and variety of towns. We're lucky enough to live where we live, so, um, people will head toward maybe the Worcester Art Museum, maybe Boston. Um, and I think the idea is to make, instead of looking at Route 20 is just a cut through, to get people to slow down. And so I think that's why Suzanne mentioned the, um, Master Plan Implementation Committee and, um, listening and taking in the information over time. Um, you know, I've spoken to Lori Connors, a town planner over time and what are you thinking? And you mentioned Blake Street. Blake Street is definitely on our mind and we would really like to participate and do something. Um, and so that is something to come down the road, probably going to be for future members, uh, as. as I age off and others come on. And that's to be seen, to be determined. So, all I can say is that you have a lot of well-meaning people here. All of us were friends and neighbors, so we will abide by what the board decides, but know that we are still here as a resource. And we'll see what we do and get into, and we absolutely appreciate your time and consideration for all of this.
Yes.
Thank you. I'd like to, we have, we have a lot more on our agenda tonight. I have loved every second of this, but we need to act on this so we can move along. I will just say, I don't see this as three projects. I see it as one project, just three phases of that, and they really work really well together. So, I'm definitely in support of, of the entire project. And at this point, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move the board vote to approve the use of ARPA funds in the amount of $34,833 for the purpose of funding the Northborough Cultural Council/Northborough Arts Council Public Art Plan pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, and to authorize the town administrator to execute a funding agreement with the Northborough Arts Council for same.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Okay. I see that is unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you for all you do.
Thank you to the town.
Okay, very good. Thanks Suzanne. Moving along, Dog Park Planning Director, speaking of Lori Connors. Okay. Okay. Okay.
Hi.
Hi.
Hi, welcome Lori.
Thank you for having me. I'm going to invite Scott in case there are some questions that he can help me answer. Okay. I also gave you folks a presentation.
We have the slides, but if you guys wanted to look at them on paper, we have them.
Yeah, I think up here should be okay.
Just quickly, an update on the Dog Park. The contract was awarded to J.M. Cataldo. Construction began in July. So far, work that they've completed to date, those pictures are what the site looks like now. They installed the erosion control measures, and they also cleared a number of trees. During the next couple of months is the heavy amount of the activity. So, what we anticipate being done is they should start installing the fence within the next couple of weeks. Also, they'll be doing the water service connection to the City of Marlborough's Water Main and Boundary Street. They will be doing the binder course pavement on the parking lots. We anticipate that they'll do the concrete work for the entrance. So, lots of great things happening soon. And then, they will take a break over the winter. Typically, not a lot can get done on outdoor projects during the wintertime. And then, as soon as the weather permits, they will get started again in the spring, and we anticipate the grand opening will take place in May of 2025. So, if you just want to move along... Okay, so this is an image. I know we have a new select board member. I'm not sure if you are familiar with what the Dog Park is going to look like. Just some highlights is, it's going to be a 1.2 acre fenced-in facility. It's going to be divided into a small dog play area and a large dog play area. There's going to be a paved parking lot for 10 cars, as well as an overflow parking lot. And then, if you want to go to the next slide, so the surfacing is going to consist of stone dust as well as mulch. As I mentioned, there is going to be a certain number of trees that are preserved, that'll provide shade, and there ultimately is going to be a stone dust path through this wooded area. Next slide. Here are some more amenities. The benches, those are the actual benches that will be installed, as well as the muttment station and the leash holding area. There are going to be boulders that the dogs can play on and a 12-by-18-foot shade pavilion, as well as a dual entry to prevent the dogs from escaping. Next slide. Just wanted to tell you, the project team for the town of Northborough, of course Scott and I, and Ally's also been assisting with the project. Once again, I mentioned the contractor, M.J. Cataldo, and then we have Weston and Sampson. They're the design engineer. So, we also engage them to provide construction oversight services. Next. Here are some more pictures of what it looks like today, and I already went over the timeline. Next. Construction budget, oh, the formatting got completely messed up on this. Sorry about that. So, I'm going to refer to my slides so I can read it. So, the contract that we signed with Cataldo was for $585,000 and change. Unfortunately, we had two change orders already, good news and bad news. The good news is that we originally anticipated installing a well, which would have cost us $40,000, but thankfully, the City of Marlborough allowed us to connect, so we're saving $12,800 approximately to our budget. But we found out after we went out to bid that Mass DOT was, DEP, was going to require a change to the design of our stormwater management system. That was designed over the summer and approved by the Conservation Commission, but the bottom line is it's increasing our construction costs by more than $40,000. So, I mentioned that we hired Weston and Sampson to provide construction oversight, so that's $32,400. And then, there's miscellaneous town costs. In order to save some money, we agreed to purchase some things ourselves. So, the rural signage and the benches, that's approximate price of $10,500. So, that brings our total construction cost to $656,000 as of this date. Of course, the unfortunate thing is anybody who's done any sort of construction work on your, on your house, you know that once you open the walls, there's always unforeseen issues that you have to contend with. Typically, what you have in a construction project is 10% contingency. Because of some of these unforeseen costs, our construction contingency was like $5,000. So, we quickly blew through that, and now we end up on the next slide with a shortfall of approximately $35,000. So, we did receive funding from CPA in the amount of 34, 347,500. We got a grant from the Stanton Foundation, $250,000. I was able to foresee that we were going to be upside down on our budget, so thankfully, I had some leftover funds in my FY '24 budget that I was able to put towards this project, almost $14,000. I had another $10,000 that I could use for consulting services in my FY '25 budget, which I committed fully. So, that gives us the total funding sources available of $621,452. So, the next slide. So, what are our options? We have two options, really. So, one is increased funding for the project. So, that's part of the reason why I'm here this evening. So, I would like to request $35,000 in ARPA funds. I understand that you folks are really concerned about the bottom line.
Sixty-five.
Yeah. He's reminding me, we need a contingency. So, I have requested 65,000. What I really need is 35,000. The 30,000 additional is just contingency. It's the 5% contingency. The other 40,000 is the other contingency. It would bring us where we should be with a contingency budget. So, if we don't want to fund this project using ARPA, then our only other choice is to change the design to reduce the cost. So, the simplest thing to get rid of is the 12-by-18-foot pavilion. It's a big-ticket item. The concrete and the footings are going to be installed regardless. Those are not part of this $53,000 budget. So, we could just delay the pavilion until funding becomes available through another source. So, I don't know how long that would take. And of course, I'm not certain that we would get that money. But that is the decision for tonight, is whether we want to fund this with ARPA or whether we want to eliminate the pavilion.
Thank you. Questions from the board? I have one question.
Sure.
But it's more about the contingency than about anything else. As I'm sure you know, and you know, and everybody knows, that we need to have everything under contract, every single penny.
Yes.
Under contract by the end of December, and then anything that we don't have under contract disappears back to the federal government.
Yes.
And that if we have it under contract and don't actually spend it, you know, in the next couple of years, and I presume this would be done long before the next couple of years, it also, anything left over disappears. Contingency is often added to a project with the hope that you don't actually need it.
Right.
How does that weigh in as far as how, how you would either use or know that you would not need in time for us to reallocate to something else?
Yeah, so, of course, like I said, the vast majority of the construction work is going to be done over the next couple of months. So, typically, a lot of the outdoor construction work ends around December 15th. But we already have a plan for how we would spend that contingency, should we not need it. So, two, two, possibly three, depending upon how much money we had available. We could buy agility equipment, which was definitely a goal that we wanted for this project. The other is, we had the intention of doing those stone dust paths through the wooded area. Those would be ADA accessible paths. Right now, we're having that area shown completely as mulch. So, if you're in a wheelchair, you won't be able to access that, that huge forested play area. And then, the third option is the overflow parking was going to have crushed gravel, because that was the cheapest option. We could also switch that to a more permanent surface like paved.
Just to extrapolate on that a little bit, so when you are going through civil construction projects, the vast majority of the change orders are related to unforeseen conditions, unforeseen subsurface conditions, those are, lack of better terms, unearthed when you're digging holes. And they'll see a lot of what issues may or may not arise needing contingency funds in the, in the coming month or two. So, we should, we should know by Thanksgiving, you know, are they hitting rock? Is there an issue with the water connection when they put the foundations in? Do they have to move, you know, adhere to ledge? So, we should have more information on what's needed contingency earlier rather than later.
Okay. Thank you. Other questions?
I guess my preference would be if we could hold off on the contingency and just cover the shortfall right now to make sure that we can get the initial plan covered. I would, I don't, and I don't know if we've got the money available, if that would come out of mine, because I do have some remaining.
Yeah, so, I mean, we all have remaining funds, none of us, because we didn't know this was coming forward when we put together our budgets or whatever you would, you would call the allocations of 320,000 per member. Nobody has allocated anything to this. That doesn't mean that we're not going to fund it, because we have funded things, but that means, you know, individually making some decisions. For me, it's pretty easy that I had budgeted, if you will, $35,000 for the item we just approved, as it turns out, Julianne was kind enough and covered half of the cultural council, or the arts council item from, from her budget. So, I have an extra $17,500 unallocated in mind that I'd be happy to put, put forward to that, but I, I think I was thinking something similar to what you were...
Yeah, and I do have remaining money, but as long as I can take the original sidewalk money and reallocate it towards this.
I will also add that when Jason put together his allocations and remaining unencumbered funds, we, we knew that when we appropriated the 1.6 million dollars and divided that up, that that was not all of what we had for ARPA, so we have, I think it was 110,000 or something like that, additional beyond that we haven't even talked about yet. So, as we get towards sidewalks and things like that, we can start to talk about how, you know, how to use that entirety, because, you know, we, we all want to spend every single penny of that ARPA money. So, you know, it's, but I think if we're going to fund this, we need to decide tonight how we're going to fund that. We funded some things that, you know, two people decide, all right, we'll just do it, or we split it across all board members or something like that. As I said, I'm comfortable putting 17.5 out of mind to cover the beginning of that, and then...
I'll do the difference, but not the contingent, hold off on the contingency. I love the extras, but if we can maybe hold the off, you know, down the road and look at possibly doing those in the future. I think once people get out there and start enjoying it, it'll be a lot easier to, to get more community support through fundraising efforts.
And I, sorry, Mike, go ahead.
Oh, no, I didn't mean to interrupt you. I, I guess one concern I have is that the project can be completed, it would just be short the pavilion.
So, of course, the price that I gave you, the cost, is as of today.
Right.
So, I don't know what's going to happen when they start doing the utility work and, you know, digging up the ground. So, we may, so that may be the final project cost, or it may get worse. And we have no contingency. So, right now, the elimination of the pavilion, that would save us 52,000, so that would give us a little bit of a contingency, 17,000, I believe. But yeah, I mean, if something else goes wrong, then we are making yet further design modifications, so we're losing amenities.
And this large frontal area is where you would, you would have no trees, right? So, you would have no shade? That's where the pavilion would go?
That is correct. So, the pavilion would kind of like this picture. The pavilion would straddle the fence. So, it would, half of it would be within the little dog play area, and half of it would be within the big dog play area, so everybody'd be able to enjoy the pavilion.
I like the idea, and I think the Dog Park has been long in coming. I think a lot of people are hoping to enjoy it. Hopefully, the dogs will get along, get down there and go, eh, I can't come back. But I just have to say, I mean, I personally think at this stage, you don't know. You don't know what's going to happen next, and, and I'd be, I'm definitely, you know, I'd lean toward the 35, but not the 65. But I almost, I'm concerned, because then you're going to need more money for something else and something else, and it's, maybe we have to minimize some of what we're doing now and add to it later, because you can always go back to CPC a year or two later to get some of the stuff that would be nice to have now, but maybe you do have to do that, so.
One critical piece, logistically wise, is that at least, you know, the 35,000 gets considered and approved at some point from somewhere, so that a contract change order can be engaged, because the stormwater has to be done before any of this other work. That's, that's the linchpin. They can't go forward, they can't start any work until they can get the stormwater change order approved. In the event things come up, bad unforeseen subsurface conditions occur, we come back, discuss it with the, with the board. Does the pavilion go away? Is there money that, that was, was available? That can be a discussion later, but the, the critical piece is that we get a change order signed as soon as tomorrow, so they can start their stormwater work.
Are there a couple of questions in the audience? I see, I recognize you, just a second. One quick question, the, this board meets roughly every two weeks. If you run into another little surprise... If you run into another little surprise, is coming back to us within a couple of weeks? If you, does that, does that give you some opportunity to address those things? Or does, would you need to make a decision right away to permanently cut something that we wouldn't be able to address?
If you could definitely award us the $35,000, because right now, we're kind of in a holding pattern. Like, I haven't bought the benches, I haven't. So there are things that need to be ordered that take several months to arrive. So if you are leaning towards giving us the $35,000, if you could vote on that tonight. And then if something else goes wrong, we can come back. You understand that we have zero contingency. So we may very well, you may very well see us again in a couple of weeks.
Okay.
The pavilion would be something that would not be likely approved until the winter. And would not arrive or be installed until the spring. So there is a 50-something thousand dollar, unfortunately, maybe. In the air, in the event there was a significant need. So that's not something that would be, you know, on the docket for ordering, you know, next week.
Okay. Is the board okay with me to ask the public to chime in?
Yeah, absolutely.
I see, if you could come up, identify yourself and let us know what's on your mind. And then I see someone named Nick, via Zoom, with a hand up. I'll recognize you after.
Thanks.
Good to see you.
Hi, I'm Rick Robinson, 167 Howard Street. My wife and I have been going to a lot of dog parks in the, throughout the New England region, just to see how they work, what works, what doesn't work. Pavilion is the one thing you do not want to lose. We've had two of the hottest summers on record. And in every one that has a pavilion, the dogs can be there in the summer. Those that don't have the pavilion, don't have shade, dogs can't be there. They run around, they get so hot, you have to take them out. You have to take them to your car, cool them off, if you don't have shade. Time and time again, you know, the dogs are, like Oxbridge is a good example. They have a pavilion and concrete underneath. And what you find is the dogs run around, have a ball. When it comes time to cool off, they all collapse in, under the pavilion, cool off. The people are there too, because we have to cool off as well. And, you know, they cool off, then they go out and run again. Don't have that pavilion, you have to take your dogs to your cars to cool them off. Otherwise, you've got a problem. So I say the pavilion is probably the worst, one of the last things you should cut. Don't pave the driveway. Don't pave the parking area. Oxbridge isn't paved, but they have the pavilion. You know, it's for the dogs, not for the people. So, you know, look elsewhere before you cut that pavilion, please. Very important for the dogs.
I'm so glad you mentioned that. I haven't, it hadn't even occurred to me. So thank you.
All right. Nick, I don't have a last name on here. I'll bring you in audio. And if you could identify yourself and let us know what's on your mind, please.
Yes, hi, can you hear me?
We do.
Hi, my name's Nick Pila, 14 Jacob Bob Lane. Also part of the Northboro Unleashed Group that has been working alongside the town to try to make this happen, fingers crossed, finally. So I just want to first state that huge thanks to Lori and Scott and Ally for working diligently on this for a number of years. I speak for a bunch of citizens, both within our group and a lot more outside of the group by saying thank you for all the hard work. I want to echo what Rick just said. I think the pavilion is critical. I think cutting the, one of the biggest aspects of the project as a contingency of unforeseen expectations might have some pretty negative impacts to the amount of people that go and the times at which people can visit, in both people and dogs. So that would be really bad to have a brand-new dog park that gets utilized a lot less because of lack of shelter. And I think that, I agree that the $35,000 for the drain water is, you know, critical. It's holding up the project. But, and I understand the fiscal responsibility of trying to not overspend on this project. But I think that walking into a, you know, $600,000 project with now no contingencies in New England construction is scary, especially knowing that we will have a very good understanding of the costs in the next, you know, six to eight weeks. So if we defer, I would just hope that we can react quick enough. Otherwise, I would feel more comfortable if we had the contingency money ready to keep this project on track and finish it so that it gets utilized. I also, my last comment is, I am nervous that if we defer design decisions and additional things that we want to do in the future, that the actual cost between construction inflation and having to get contractors to go back out on site, bring equipment, redesign, that the cost is going to be, you know, 2-3X when you have all that overhead just to get back there and rebid it and all that. It's going to cost time and money that we would save by doing it at the beginning. So that's the end of my comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Nick. Okay, so I think I'm hearing that between Laura and I, we have the $35,000 covered for the basics. Do any other board member want to contribute anything additional towards the contingency? If we can't have that covered, then you could come back again. And I'll certainly put you on the next agenda that we can. But I understand that that also places some limitations on how quickly you can react to surprises.
Work can proceed under a engineering field directive. So in the event you hit something in the ground, you need to remove ledge, you give me a price that is $18,000, a field directive can be issued as long as there's an identification of how the project can afford the extra 18 by removing temporarily the pavilion until we come before the board.
Okay.
For another decision, so.
I appreciate all the flexibility around that. Thank you.
Very good. Hearing no volunteer, Julianne?
So you have $25,000 for benches. And I don't think that we said those benches had to be in a certain place. Could you use some of that money for those benches?
Oh, the benches that we approved, that was for downtown. That was explicitly downtown, yeah.
Could you change that?
The amount of money in benches here, I believe, is like just shy of $7,000.
So it's not, it wouldn't, but it would be, you know, if you ran up against something. But I guess we'd have to re-vote on that.
Right, yeah, I would want to look at that later, not today.
So I'm not inclined to do contingency money now because I don't want to scramble in the middle of December. What are we going to do if it's not used?
I agree.
Yep, okay, all right.
Mr. Chair?
Yep.
I move the board vote to allocate, was it 35, sorry?
35, correct.
$35,000? $35,000 in ARPA funds to the Planning Director for Northboro Unleashed Dog Park as presented and for expenditure of such sum pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A.
Is there a second?
Second, thank you. My dogs do thank you.
Yes. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Okay.
No.
Mike opposed the other four in favor. The item passes, is approved. Next item, we have some trees.
So Scott and I are partnering on this project as well. So this is a project that was discussed with the Master Plan Implementation Committee.
I'm sorry, can you, I don't know who's doing the director. I don't know if there's any tree item on there.
Nope.
Okay.
So the idea would be that it would be focused on the downtown area or the, I should say, Northboro Center. It would be a bigger scope than the study area for the downtown that was completed a year ago. So letters would be sent out to residents on certain selected priority streets asking if they are interested in having, adopting a tree. So they would be given a choice of nine different trees to select from. And then our tree warden would go out and inspect the locations, make sure that they were suitable for a tree, make sure that they were suitable for a certain species. The individuals could select their top three, and they would get one of those three. So there would only be one tree per property. And of course, in order to meet the ARPA spending requirements, we would sign a contract with a landscape company to purchase the trees. And then we would sign another contract with an installer to install the trees. So for example, I did do some pricing of trees with Bigelow. And we can buy 62 trees of the nine species that we have settled on for approximately $15,000. Not quite sure what the planting would cost. Hopefully, we would be able to find a local landscaper that might reduce their service fee for such a project. But that's the idea. And so that way, we can green up our center, make our center more attractive. And of course, we'll get all the environmental benefits of more street trees along our trees, our streets.
Any questions, Laura?
I love new trees. We, my Girl Scout troop last year planted a tree. And one of the challenges that we had to figure out was the watering schedule. I love the idea of 62 new trees around town. Is there a plan to keep them watered for that first year?
Yes, so when they send in their letter of interest, so these forms, the letters with participation forms would be sent out to these priority areas.
Yep.
And the folks who return the forms saying that they want a tree have to commit to taking care of the tree.
Great.
So they are adopting the tree, they are watering it, they are ensuring that it has mulch, and pruning it as it grows. So that will not be a town responsibility at all.
With that process, what if perhaps the tree doesn't survive because it's not properly cared for? What's the plan there?
And it will not be there anymore, unfortunately.
So would that be, okay, thank you.
So that's part of the reason why Scott would be involved with ensuring that the locations are appropriate and that the species is appropriate. Like, for example, if you have overhead utilities.
Yep.
We're not going to be planting red maple under that. It's probably going to be more appropriate small magnolia or, you know, something that doesn't grow very large. And we have to make sure that shading and all of that's.
We can consider Gator Bags, that's a manufacturer's name, but a watering bag for the trees. Typically, when you engage the services of a landscape contractor and a municipal contract, they'll put watering bags on the trees because they do have a warranty on the survivability of the trees. So instead of them having their folks drive around with watering trucks, they just fill the bags.
Actually, that's another good question with Bigelow. Do they, when we purchase the trees, would they have insurance included with their trees? Or would that not be included if we bought through them?
Well, typically, all of the landscapers that I know of, like if I buy a tree from Home Depot, I believe there's a one-year warranty on that tree.
Okay.
If they plant, with Bigelow's, I always thought it was if they plant it.
I just.
The warranty would be through the landscape company, the contractor who plants the trees.
Okay.
I think it also depends. Like, I know there is one landscaper that I purchased bushes from, and they provide me with a written warranty. Home Depot does not. So, you know, I have to retain my receipt with that warranty, so.
Right, right, yeah.
Okay, as far as funding, you're requesting $25,000 for this. As it turned out, Julianne put in a line item for $25,000 for TreeScape. However, Lisa put in $1,000 for TreeScape.
With that, I have questions, my $1,000.
I'm going to make a suggestion. If you're both okay with it, use your $1,000 and use 24 out of yours as a way of letting you keep an extra $1,000 for something else, because there are some surprises there, and maybe you wouldn't miss the $1,000.
How about we just give $26,000?
We could give $26,000. Do you want $26,000?
Absolutely, I can use it.
Well, now my turn.
Okay.
So I love the trees, love the tree ideas, been asking for trees for years. We also have part of our Board of Selectment shell annually by September prepare recommendations with a site-specific location for public shade tree replacements and additions. That's been here, we've done it to my knowledge. Have we replaced a tree, Scott? When was we cut down?
Not a public shade, yes, one public shade tree.
One, okay. So I would like to see some of this go to that as well. I think we've got areas that, you know, we've lost trees at Ellsworth McAfee. We lost trees at Assavet. We've lost a lot of trees in many places. And I think that we really need to replace those trees as well. This program I'm a little concerned with in that you put it on the responsibility of the homeowner. And then when the tree gets bigger or what have you, then they have to be responsible for, you know, obviously taking care of it. If something happens to it and starts to deteriorate and needs to be taken down, then there's a bigger responsibility. It's almost $1,000 to have a tree removed today. Your ask is a big ask for everybody who might be able to adopt the tree. They might be happier to give you money toward the tree and adoption as opposed to put it on my property and then be responsible for it. Where are the, where are these locations? 62 is a lot of trees, that's pretty good. But where are you envisioning the trees to go downtown? Like, where is there spots?
It would be completely voluntary. So people would have to agree to accept responsibility in order to participate. And the locations on the specific property, it would be within 20 feet of the right-of-way. So it couldn't be further away. It can't be in the backyard, it can't be, you know, 200 feet over in the McAfee Park, you know. It has to be up by the street in order to get the benefit. And because it's a completely voluntary program, chances are they're going to be scattered. And I have done a program like this in the past. And you might get three on Main Street and five on South Street and, you know, maybe two on River Street. It really just depends on the popularity of the program. Because like I said, it's 100% voluntary.
So have we made plans, though, to replace the ones in the parks that are going, and the cemetery?
We could allocate a certain amount of money towards the purchase of trees for municipal properties within the town center. So we could do that.
So those trees are not public shade trees. They're not located within or adjacent to a right-of-way. Those are just public grounds trees. So they're not governed by Chapter 87 of Massachusetts General Law. They're quite a bit different. Public shade trees have protections under the law. That's what Lori's discussing and talking about. Planting public shade trees within 20 feet of the right-of-way on private property is common practice. It's almost the standard throughout the Commonwealth and a lot of progressive communities. This tree, the draft tree policy you're referring to was based on that of other communities that have had this policy implemented for a number of years. We don't have any plans for replacing the trees at, I assume you're talking about the Brigham Street Cemetery, the burial ground? No, we don't have any plans for that. We don't have any plans for installation of trees at the other two cemeteries. Nor do we have plans for replacement of public shade trees that are moved along the roadways.
All right, so, I mean, but basically, can't we put some of those to that? I think that it's, even though, you know, in terms of Assavet, that was public shade. They were, it was in a park, may not be 20 feet. Well, it depends on where you plant it.
A public shade tree is a defined term in Massachusetts General Law. So they are trees that provide shade. They're not governed by law. So can we have a program where we offer to replace a public shade tree when it's removed? Absolutely. We don't have that program right now. Nor do we have a policy, nor do we have funding to support it.
At the point of having it, it's like, at least some of these trees, you may not get that many people in the area that might want to volunteer. So you may have more trees. So you may have more trees than places to put them on that schedule.
Yeah. So I envision that this would be a multi-season program. So the first year, there would be a spring planting and there would be a fall planting. And it would depend upon the level of interest. And then the same for the next year, chances are just a spring planting. So there are certain, of course, we haven't worked out the logistics yet because we currently have no funding. But I would envision that what we would do is we would have, like, the first-tier streets. So let's send out the flyers to all of them, see what the level of interest is. If it's not there, then we send out letters of interest for second-tier streets and kind of tackle it that way.
And what size tree were you thinking about there?
So I spoke to a landscaper to kind of bounce this idea, and the suggestion was to not go larger than one and a half inch caliper, because it becomes much more difficult to plant the tree. So they need a different type of equipment to plant a bigger tree than that. So that is the size that I'd be most interested in pursuing.
What, and Scott, what was the size of the trees that you planted on the common?
Those were, those were two-inch calipers. There were a couple two-and-a-halves as well. Along the frontage, we tried to match the existing trees that were around the Civil War Memorial, but they were, they were a bit more expensive.
Lisa, I really like the idea of replacing some trees that have had to be removed elsewhere in town. I don't see that as part of this program, but I'd be very interested in finding a way to do some of that, whether it be through a separate ARPA program or annual budget or some, some way. I mean, if, if a tree's in a good place and the tree dies, which trees do, ideally, we should really replace it. You'd need the money to do that, so we'd need to figure that out. I just see that as being a, a different program than this proposal. I think you've, you've sized this one for the downtown shade tree program and in that particular area.
Do, do the shade trees, you say to carry some, I guess, different legal protections or wording. So somebody signs up, adopts a tree, however many they are allocated, sell their property, a new owner now takes it over. Can they remove those trees?
Yes, they can.
It's private property, so that ultimately, they have the control. We're not going to be able to keep tabs on all of these trees long-term. But it, it would be a benefit. So most homeowners, property owners, and also businesses could also express interest in a tree. So it's not just residential. But it, once the tree is planted and then the expectation is they will care for it, if they decide five years from now to cut it down, then that's their choice.
So the public shade tree law applies to existing trees that are located within the right-of-way. Any portion of the trunk that's located within the right-of-way qualifies that tree as being a public shade tree. So in order to do any work on that public shade tree, municipality has to post a public hearing. And then we can trim, prune, or remove the tree unless it poses an immediate hazard to, to public, an immediate public safety hazard. These, the public shade tree law also allows municipalities to replace trees that are removed up to within 20 feet of the right-of-way. So what happens is a lot of communities have public shade trees that are located in the grass strip. It's a completely inappropriate place for a tree. The, the roots heave the sidewalks, they protrude onto the roadway, they compromise the roadway and the curbing. A lot of those trees are being removed throughout, throughout Central Mass, and they're being replaced when there is a tree replacement program, let's say 10 feet behind the sidewalk, where it's not going to damage the infrastructure, but it is on private property. So that, that's the intent of the way the law was, was, was put together.
All right. Any other questions? Are we still comfortable with $26,000?
Well, I want to know, in two years, if they, you haven't got takers, what are you going to do with the rest of the trees? Put them in the park?
I'm confident we'll have takers. Like I said, you know, I've already done a similar program in another community, and it was pretty popular. We did end up putting a number of trees. It was always the intent to put a number of trees on municipal property. So we did trees along the right-of-way at various schools, also within parks, as long as they were by the right-of-way, we included that as part of our street tree program. So I am confident that we will find plenty of locations for 60 trees over a two-year span.
Okay. So this, this is different than the street tree project. This is a, this is a different situation.
This, this is the, the street tree project. So it's the Northborough Center Street Tree Project. So the roads, we will identify, the people who will get the mailing are the people who are within our defined center area, which may be, you know, half a mile from Four West Main. I don't know, we haven't defined it yet.
Okay. All right. You might be second-tier. I might be second-tier? I mean, I get one back in my house.
Might be first-tier.
And you said, Lori, some of this 25, 26,000 in trees may go on, on town-owned property.
Some of it may, sure. Like, for example, I mean, I'm eyeing this for the Blake Street project, but I, along Four West Main on Blake Street, I can foresee two trees planted on the side. So this may be an opportunity to do that.
I'd rather go to the parks, but.
All right. Are we ready to, to do this? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move the board vote to allocate $26,000 in ARPA funds to the Planning Director for the purpose of the Beautify Northborough Center Adopt a Tree Program as presented pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A. Second.
Motion made by Julianne, seconded by Laura. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Aye. I see that as unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Next up, we have Town, also under ARPA, Town Hall Kitchen Appliances, request for $1,878. Tim, I know you've got a, a presentation on this, I don't think we actually need it.
I just had pictures.
Yeah. Just, yeah.
Pictures, I may, we're trying to improve, obviously, Town Hall. We want to get a refrigerator that has space so we can store a pizza after hours. All you need in the middle, so you have a freezer and you have that, and you cannot fit a box comfortably. And nor do we have an ice maker, which would make ice. So we're looking for funding for a refrigerator and a microwave.
We have a, I mean, this is a small dollar amount for something that benefits, you know, Town Hall employees.
Yeah, it was a question that, you know, Michael had asked, hey, what can we do to improve morale and improve conditions?
Yeah.
And this is one of them.
Yeah. Are there any other appliances? I don't know if the.
You want a dishwasher?
Coffee maker?
Those, these, these, we're in the middle of construction now, it works out perfect.
Yeah.
Oh, good.
Okay. As far as allocation goes, both Mike and Julianne had initially put in $56,000 for immediate facility repairs, and you split the cost on that, so in theory, you each have $28,000 of budget. If the two of you want to split this whopping $1,800 item, we could dispense with this pretty quickly.
Yeah, I mean, or I'm fine covering it. I mean, I reached out to Tim to ask about it.
Oh, okay.
So, you know, that, that's certainly fine. Yeah, yeah, no, the, the only, I guess, question I have is, and not to be too much of a nerd, and I won't belabor the point, general electric appliances, in my opinion, aren't sort of what they used to be. I would, I would maybe lean more towards if, if the cost is about the same, something from like Whirlpool, Maytag, KitchenAid. I know GE Appliances isn't the same company as like GE Jet Engines and stuff like that. It's actually majority owned by Chinese multinational hair electronics. So it's, it's slightly different as opposed to Whirlpool, which is an American multinational. Just throwing that out there.
If we allocate it.
Rebrand it, we can.
That'd be great.
That's the quote we got.
Either way, I would only vote against it if you were trying to buy something from Samsung. They make good phones, but their appliances are not.
Oh, my gosh.
I know from.
Do we maybe want to allocate a nice even $2,000 so that you have a little bit of flexibility and, and I trust you to find something else that we could do with the kitchen with anything left over?
That'd be great.
You want to give him $2,000?
Yeah, please.
All right. And are the two of you okay? $1,000 each, okay?
Absolutely.
Okay, then.
Is there a motion?
I move the board to allocate $2,000 in ARPA funds to the Town Administrator for the purpose of Town Hall Kitchen Appliances as presented pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A.
Second.
Okay. Motion made by Lisa, seconded by Julianne. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I see that as unanimous. All right. And one more. ARPA request for this evening, assessment of land use operations. Tim, tell us about this one, I'm excited about this.
So two, two quick things. When, I saw quotes from a couple different groups. Central Mass Planning was one of them, and the Cullen Center was the other. We really, I thought we should evaluate our building, planning, conservation, land use departments and how they interact and cooperate with, internally and externally, and then take those and compare them to best practices against other municipalities. Also, I was worried about at the financial summit, some of the comments that the building inspector made about zoning enforcement, processing of applications, so that worried me. The lack of anything before planning or zoning from a big project standpoint as well. So I want those things to kind of be looked at holistically to make sure that if we're doing something inappropriate, our bottlenecks or our lag time, I want to find those efficiencies. So that's what the Cullen Center will do under this proposal. I'm hoping, just by way of example, we are online for permitting. One of the things we just changed was the homeowner is now required during the application process for submittals to put their email address in. So when we notify the contractor, something is good or bad or passed or failed, the homeowner knows what that exact is. Because sometimes contractors, even though they're awesome, they don't always, they're not always honest with their client. So now we know we can fill that missing link. So if that's a best practice, practice that we discovered just in the day-to-day operation, we hope to find other things like that that'll make the process better. At the end of this, with all of our customer service orientation that we have, recreation, council on aging, to the library, after they do programs, are always surveying the people who participate. We need to get there, and hopefully, this will get us to where we randomly ask applicants about their experience so we continue our process of closing the feedback loop and then making the process better for the end user.
And one question, you didn't mention the phrase economic development, but that is in the proposal, so I assume that that is part of what they're looking at.
It's part and parcel. As you do those things better, you, you should just automatically gain.
Will, will they be looking at what it would take to potentially add a, an economic development person or a committee in that loop? Because that's.
Yeah, it's, maybe we can scope it under this.
Yeah.
But I think they'll, there might be a natural evolution from this to that. But we're going to look at the internal structures and operation first, and that may be something that just automatically gets thought of.
Okay.
As you've already thought of it.
Yeah, yeah.
No, no detailed analysis about what the benefit would be. I still think you have to coalesce around a goal of what you think economic development should look like before you hire someone. But no, short answer is no.
Okay. All right.
So again, explain the three different, three different areas they're going to work in? What are they going to?
All land use, all you, land use, so you have conservation, planning, and the building department. So they look at all and how they function to the outside world and how it looks for the user experience, and internally, how we collaborate or don't collaborate. I think you do collaborate very well together, and they'll evaluate that and then create best practices, or at least examine our practices as it relates to the outside world and their best practices, and give us a recommendation on implementing those.
How long is it going to take?
I think they have in their contract four to six weeks.
So just to, sorry. So just to confirm, the goal of this is to help solve some of the complaints we've heard about our permitting process, or what's the ultimate?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, ultimately, any process that is deficient, we want to improve upon it.
And then ultimately, it may result in, you know, faster permitting times, faster contractor, you know, so they can get their work done quicker?
Yeah. If there's a best practice, like notifying a homeowner at the same time, or getting things to be sent out simultaneously from the system, it'll identify that and we'll implement that recommendation.
Will they also tell us if they notice areas in our current process that are lacking?
Yeah. They'll, they'll conduct interviews with all those groups and those users and workforce and say, how does it go now? And again, compare it to the best practices, how it does, how it should go or does go in places that do it better than we do it.
I really like this idea, and I like that it's going to be looked at, at a, at a high level. Because this has been, I think, since the day we got elected, this has been an ongoing, I guess, comment we've heard from residents. So, thank you.
Well, there is, there is some, I mean, I did, I did talk to a couple of different people who are not happy with the price increases of the permits and, and some of the processes that they have to go through. So there's a 15-page application for certain things. I don't know if, I honestly don't know if that's, if you go to ZBA, it's a 15-page application, or if it's an application for anything that you do. But that they felt that it was, it was too difficult. They didn't want to do it online, they didn't like it, saying, you know, stop, stop what they had planned. So.
We'll find, we'll find all those pinch points, we'll identify them, and we'll have implementable strategies so we can make it better.
This is an item that wasn't explicitly allocated, but I, I think I'm seeing support around the table. Mike suggests we just split it five ways.
I got money. I'm happy to support this one.
Okay, you don't want to contribute towards this, okay?
No.
Julianne, yes or no on this?
Yes.
Okay, Mike?
Yeah, no, I think it's important to, to do this probably periodically, but, you know, should certainly be done, you know, to Tim's point, find efficiencies, you know, show the public that we're, we're working to, to do that, so.
Okay. And you're interested in contributing?
100%.
And I'm also interested, so we'll split this four ways.
Yep. I like the idea of being able to, like, when people are commenting about it, that we'll have, like, an honest response for something that we are doing to, to look at.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Yes. Mr. Chair, I move the board vote to allocate, to allocate 15,000 in ARPA funds to the Town Administrator for the purpose of assessment of land use operations as presented pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A.
Second.
Motion made by Mike, seconded by Laura. Any other discussion? Julianne?
Are you voting?
Are you voting, or you have a question?
Sorry.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I see that as unanimous. All right. Thank you.
Pictures here, real quick. I thank Scott and Sean for getting this from that to this, so thank you very much.
Wow, that was great. Thank you.
Thanks. Does anyone need a short break before we continue? Does anyone feel like we should, we should end before we get to some more of these things?
I'm sure the police station piece will be very clear.
Yeah, I think we have two. We've got two to do anyway, right?
Yeah, we've, we've got a couple of these things that we.
Katie Dunn, and.
I am concerned about the time, though.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think I agree with you after those two.
Can we plan on just prioritizing?
Yeah, let's, is everyone agreement that we're going to do the police station siding?
Yeah.
Okay, and then we'll, then we'll think, we'll.
I'll be back on the 23rd if, if, if it's, you know.
Yeah, we'll do this one, and then we'll see what, what we're in for next. Okay.
Going to do this first?
Yes, please.
Yeah, police station siding.
Sorry.
Okay.
I'll only put these two slides here, just so the board knew where this was posted.
Yeah.
So you can just see those, and Scott's going to walk you through what we think happened with the fact that we got no bids.
Yep. So, you're aware that we put the police station siding project out to bid, and I sent an email out to the board with a link to the town's webpage, which provides prospective bidders access to the bid documents and registers them as plan holders. The advertisements you see here are in accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter thirty, thirty-nine M, it's what we, whatever every community does, I'm sorry, Chapter one forty-nine, what every community does for building projects. This building project also requires DCAM certification. It's a certification through the state that identifies certain contractors as qualified to do the work. The DCAM certification requirement is based on the, the expected cost of the project. Over a hundred fifty thousand dollars, you've got to be DCAM certified to submit a bid. You don't have to be DCAM certified to get the drawings, anybody can get the drawings. So, what you see in front of you here is the plan holder list. So, there were sixteen plan holders. Some of them are just simple plan houses. So, there's a lot of companies out there that get invitations for bid, packages together, and then contractors just subscribe to one of them. There's Project Drug, Construct Connect, Prime Vendors, Deltec, there's a bunch of other ones as well. So, they're not prospective bidders, they're just plan, plan houses. You take, you remove those, there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, leaves nine prospective bidders that, that are contractors. Northeast Painting, NEL Corporation, Infrastructure Limited, CNK Roofing, HJ Russell, CJO Builders, Antonelli Construction, FRG, and Pickhorn. The bid process went forward, we had a pre-bid, non-municipal pre-bid site visit. The only person who showed up was a vendor. There were no contractors that showed up. The vendor was a salesman. He sells siding project, products. The, there were no questions submitted during the bid process. If you're a prospective bidder, and you have a question about the bid package, meaning something isn't clear, what do you mean by this exactly? How do you expect us to do that? You submit a question in writing via email, all those are, the requirements are all available in the instruction of bidders, and then we issue an addendum, answering questions. Sometimes you postpone the bid, sometimes you, you know, have some clarifications, some new specs, a new detail, maybe there was a typo on a drawing, and it said it's a hundred feet, should be ten feet. We did not receive any questions from any prospective bidders, so the bid opening proceeded on September fifth, and at 2:00 PM, we received zero bids. Nobody submitted bids. So, I guess, you know, bid opening, that doesn't necessarily occur if there's no bids to open. That's where we are here today.
Have you reached out to any, any of the people that, that got the information to ask, hey, you know, was there something that could have been different that you would have been interested in?
I did. We, we reached out to a couple contractors who are on the plan holder list, one of which was, one of them that gave us the estimate a long time ago for materials alone. I believe it was Infrastructure Limited. They did not have time to bid. It wasn't, it wasn't a project on their radar to bid, so they chose not to. I reached out to another contractor, I want to say, it was one of the acronyms, either CJO, or HJ, or FRG. They're not DCAM certified, so they read the bid, they're not qualified, they're not going to submit a bid. And I spoke to Antonelli Construction Company, and they said, they weren't exactly sure what we wanted. Did you want vinyl, did you want clapboard?
Vinyl.
I said, well, we don't know, you've got to submit two numbers. He said, well, we, we're not going to be competitive with vinyl, so we chose not to bid, because I didn't know what you wanted. I said, okay. We discussed with the architect here, one of the, you know, a couple meetings we had, with the concern that the architect expressed that I echoed, putting the bid package together the way it was, it was likely going to eliminate certain prospective bidders. A vinyl siding company is not going to bid on this, because they don't do clapboard replacement. A carpentry company is likely not going to bid on it, because they're not going to be competitive on vinyl siding. So, that leaves you with general contractors. It's a relatively small project when it comes to DCAM certified general contractors. The amount of effort it takes to be a general contractor on a, let's say it's a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar project, the amount of effort it takes to be a GC on that is very similar to what it would be on a two-point-five-million-dollar project. It, it, the, the profit isn't there. My guess is that, that, that's why general contractors really didn't, didn't pick up the drawings or submit. I know NEL's a general contractor, as is Infrastructure Limited. So, that, that, those, those are my, my guesses on why general contractors didn't submit. The former comment about excluding prospective bidders because of the way the package was put out apparently showed true, from what the architect had suggested might happen. It did.
Questions, or do we want to ask Scott for his suggestions?
Oh, I'm sorry that, that we didn't get any responses, and I wish there was an easier way around this. I just still think...
The unfortunate thing is, now, we've got to put the board on the spot, you've got to kind of...
Well, no, there isn't a way. We need to make a decision as, you know, instead of trying to hedge and getting nothing...
Can we hedge by doing, doing both? Like, can you do two simultaneous bids, or will people look at that and laugh?
Wouldn't you do the more expensive one first?
Yeah.
Then you know you can't afford it, and then you do the cheaper one?
Yeah, the only, so if, if we were to put a bid out on the street for vinyl siding, and we're not sure which one we want, and the vinyl siding comes in at two-hundred, two-hundred thousand dollars, we have adequate funds to, to do the project, we have to engage them. If we choose not to, because we changed our mind, we could be subject to being forced to reimburse the contractors for the cost to generate their bids. I've done hundreds and hundreds of bids, I've never done that. So, as Tim indicated, you bid out the highest one. What do you think is going to be the most expensive? That way, if the number comes in above your allocated budget, you don't have to award it. Then you could bid out the lower one. If the number comes in within your budget, congratulations, you have a project going forward.
Which of the two? I know the answer, but which of the two is the most expensive?
Siding, the cedar siding, the selective demolition, I believe, would be the most expensive of the two options. It's also the most vulnerable to change orders. Once they strip off the siding, we don't know what the sheathing looks like, we don't know how much of the siding is going to fall apart. When I went out on the, on the site with the vendor, I went to show him one of the, one of the pieces of siding that was loose, and he pointed out, which is something that I had missed, that the way they, the way the, the joints are, the, I don't want to say it's a lap joint, it's not a lap joint, it's like, it's like a knife joint. The lower and the upper board were also compromised, just because of the movement of the board, because of the nails, and it just, whatever. So, there's a lot of question, and we talked about this at length. So, the more expensive of the two would be the selective demolition, I believe.
Do I remember right that, was it Mike and I that were more leaning towards the vinyl, and the three of you more leaning towards cedar?
Yes, and the town meeting said the vinyl.
Yeah.
So, I think we need to go with what they're saying.
Town meeting didn't, only voted on a dollar amount, so...
It was discussion.
Yeah, no, I, I...
Right, but the, the approval was for a number, not for a...
Yeah, it was for a number. I'm okay, following your logic in bidding out the most expensive, which is the cedar, even though, my opinion, vinyl is long-term the, the most economic solution. With one change, I know on the front face of the building, you had put in some high estimate as far as the percentage, my opinion, a hundred percent. You know, don't, don't say it's going to be about eighty-five percent, or whatever that number was, because the changes on, orders on that are going to kill you, and you have the ability for stripping all the cedar off of that building, you have the opportunity to replace all the stuff underneath, and start fresh, and it, that needs to get done. So, my, I'm okay bidding it out for cedar with that caveat. Honestly, I think that probably makes it less expensive, because there's, someone can look at that and do the square footage and say, we, we don't have to examine every board to see what we need to replace, we're just going to tear the whole thing.
Although to do the whole thing, the whole cedar front just alone, if I'm referencing back to prior meetings, just that is more than vinyling the whole building.
Yeah.
Oh, that's crazy.
Yeah, well, I, I, I mean, Scott's suggesting we do the most expensive, we bid it out, we see where we are, and I, I, I don't want to go back and forth vinyl versus cedar.
I know, I don't want to do that either. I guess my concern is, we do that, the cedar number comes in big as projected, just like, you won't get as many bids came to pass as projected, we got none, and the police station still isn't completed.
Yeah.
And it's continued to be kicked down the road.
This won't, this won't be done till next year. There's, there's no, we, we will engage a contractor before the winter, I'm confident, if, as long as we have successful bids, but there's no way this will be done.
Do we have time to go out to bid on cedar, theoretically say cedar is too expensive, reject them all, then go out to bid on vinyl, find a vinyl, and award the vinyl before the end of the year?
I believe so.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, this is, I mean, again, this is not ARPA-funded, so it's a town meeting article, so...
What if we need ARPA to bridge it out?
That's what I'm after.
And, like, we're in a time crunch there.
Yeah, yeah, we have a certain dollar amount, you know, we may be over that, particularly with cedar. If the board opts to fund the difference, we would need, I guess, then, then we're not doing the, the double loop.
It's, it's likely an eight-week turnaround for two bids. So, we go out for, call it, call it a month of bid, because we've got to...
Yeah.
Massage the documents, they're not, obviously, can't put them out the way they are now. But yes, we, we're two months, so we're sitting here the middle of September, middle of October, yeah, we'll be good.
Yeah, I said, my personal preference is bid, bid it out vinyl, but I think recognizing where the board is on this, and the idea of bidding out the most expensive first.
Yep.
That's my suggestion.
Yep.
With that change of doing the whole front.
Well, if, if town meeting said anything, they reduced our allocation.
Yeah.
Right.
So, are they saying, go find the most expensive one? I mean, how, how does, how does going out for cedar get us to possibly vinyl?
I, I respect that a lot of people want, prefer the cedar. We need to get an answer on that. If cedar happens to be within the allocation the town meeting provided, then I, you know, I think we just, we just do it, recognizing that long-term, we're going to be painting every few years. But, again, given that there are three members of the board that prefer cedar, I think we have to try it out. If it's all right, I'd like to recognize Doug, given he, he played a role in this of giving us a budget.
Yeah, I'm the one that just said, hey, five forty was way too much. I'm Doug Stone, Thirty-three Rachel Road, and sort of a knee-jerk reaction of, you know, hey, this is way too much money, cut it in half without, you know, any real knowledge of what it would take to fix it. And then the more I learned about it, you know, I was, wasn't so sure that the original plan wasn't going to work. And I, you know, I, I guess I wanted to ask the board, has anybody been there since, besides Lisa, has anybody been to the police station and looked at it? Because I offered to go out there and have people show me what they thought the problem was, and I, I haven't had that opportunity.
Up there?
Oh, yeah.
Because the front of it doesn't look like it needs total replacement to me. So, if somebody wants to go and show me that, you know, then I don't have to be here wasting everybody's time. But, you know, the new, you know, so I just learned today that just the, the replacement of the siding was the only option that was pursued. At the July meeting, we discussed two scenarios, and, and, and so potentially, we, we had the, you know, the, the painting, and the staining, and the selective repair of some of the siding that potentially was going to be bid out both ways. And the original quote with the painting had a repair contingency in it, and I agree that there's some boards that do need to be replaced, there's no question about it. And, you know, what's new since that meeting, and I did email the board, was I talked to Rhino Shield, they, they do commercial, and they do a, a ten-year warranty, they have a repair division, so they can repair some of these things. And so, you know, I'm trying to avoid this huge sum based on an architect's opinion versus, we had a painting company out there as soon as, recently as June, that said it was doable. And so, so basically, you know, I, I just, there's a disconnect here between the people in the painting business, and then an architect whose opinion isn't quite as specialized as, as the painting people. So, then, of course, the comment is, yeah, well, the, the painting people, they just wanted the job. So, so I'm, I'm confused, and just, you know, wanting to get it done at a reasonable cost, and so that's where I'm coming from.
Thanks. Questions follow up to that? Okay.
The Rhino Shield has, lasts how long?
It's a ten-year...
Ten-year, okay.
On commercial buildings, and I said, well, how much does it cost? And they said, well, it's, it's one to one and a half percent, one to, a hundred to a hundred and fifty percent times the cost of a regular paint job. So, I mean, you can figure on fifty percent more than, right? And then after that period, I said, well, what happens then? Do you have to keep repainting it with Rhino Shield? No, you can just repaint with regular paint. You can do whatever you want. So, so anyway, if...
So, I, I think that what the, an architect knows how to look at the entirety of a building. And what the architect told us, and correct me if I'm wrong, Scott, is not only are the boards fallen off, but the material underneath has deteriorated. And just painting doesn't resolve that, and still leaves the opportunity for moisture to get into a building. And that concerns me for the, the long-term viability of the building.
Oh, wait, oh, there's the long-term viability. What are we expecting for that building?
Well, I, I mean, I hope, I hope we get another thirty or forty years out of it.
Well, then we're going to have to.
We kind of have to.
But we have, we have a, we have a already coming up feasibility study.
Right, but I mean, realistically...
Realistic is to take everything off that, and put vinyl on it, and then take that all down, we go to change it, doesn't make sense. It makes sense to repair what you need to repair, paint it, and be done with it.
So, is that answer wood to go out to bid?
Yep, yep, that's it.
Replace rotted wood in paint.
I'm, I'm, no. Wait, 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 wait.
I'm just asking what it is, I don't know.
Just to clarify, for, for, to respond to Doug's comments, so the, the bid package was publicly advertised. If Rhino Shield was interested in submitting a, a, a bid on it, they would have. You know, we received a quote from, from a, a painting, local painting contractor. If they were interested in doing the project for that number, they had every right to submit a bid on it. If their number is under the one-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar threshold for DCAM certification, they do not need to submit a DCAM certification form, because it's under the value. So, these contractors know, or should know, how to bid a project. If they don't know how to bid a public project, I don't think they should be bidding a public project, because they don't know how to do certified payrolls, prevail, prevailing wage rates, go through a potential completion inspection. It just, it's, it's a different environment in municipal bidding. There was available for them, have they had interest and wanted the project? We would be sitting here talking about awarding them a job.
Well, if I could just respond to that, in my email that I sent to the selectmen right after, the day after the meeting in July, is that I, I wrote down the Rhino Shield's number, I said I'd be happy to call them, once I knew that the bid was out, and I was, you know, led to believe I was going to be copied on this bid. But in any event, somebody could have called me and said, hey, Doug, why don't you call Rhino Shield? And I would have called them, and they would have come out.
Well, the, I mean, they, they have the opportunity to monitor the state bid lists and every, every other way that we advertise the project. They were also, it sounded like if they're just basically a painting contractor, that's not what we bid out.
Well, they have a repair division.
All right, so, I, I don't want to, and I don't think we should tonight, after eleven o'clock, start to get sidetracked into other things beyond, do we want to bid it again cedar, do we want to bid it again vinyl? And I think, you know, I, I think general consensus seems to be bid it again cedar, replacing the front. If we're going to look towards doing something very different than that, I think we should have another discussion another night. Because we, we spent two hours on it a couple months ago.
Right.
And it would be the same thing again.
I just, I think you said it before, just bid it out in the cedar first, and see what happens. And then spend more time after that discovering what it is.
Yep, I agree.
Okay.
Thank you.
I disagree, but I'm outvoted.
Yep, yep. I appreciate that, okay.
This, I believe, because I've done cedar siding myself, Western Red Cedar, and primed it on the back and both sides, and, and now they, they've come out with a new, like a pine board. So, you go to Home Depot, and you're not necessarily going to find Western Red Cedar anymore, you're going to find like a pine board. So, that, I don't know if the contractor would come up with that, or whether that would even be a suitable material. So, I just wanted to throw that out there.
Thanks. All right, so I think we, I think we've made a decision as to how we're going to proceed. Yep, let us know what you get back.
We'll get on it right away, and we'll get it back on the street. I will email out the board again, the link to the, to get the, the invitation for bid, and if you guys have any contractors that you think would be interested in bidding, you know, please share it.
I'll let you know this time, Doug, I'm sorry about that. Thank you.
Here we are, okay. I think everyone was interested in taking up the vote to appoint Katie Holt, Assistant Town Accountant.
And that'll be the last for tonight.
Yeah, well, some of these are going to be pretty quick, and we will, let's get through this one.
Okay, it's eleven fifteen.
We'll take a look, and then we decide as a board.
Okay.
Hi. Okay, hey, I see Katie Holt here. Do we want to bring her in or not?
Just in case you want me up here.
We want a congratulator.
Yep. Tim, do you want me to bring Katie in?
While you do that, do you want me to just give you a brief follow-up view? So we started this process back in April, really, when we started passing the budget. January, we got Jason back. Katie was in that office working with the consultant, getting us to where we could get everything processed. The interview was done by Jason and by Diane and by Lisa Trost. It was an internal posting. We want to obviously provide, provide a career path for our employees. Katie's been with the town for over eight years and I think two and a half in your office. I have absolutely no reservation at all. Jason's going to tutor this woman to be a great town accountant. So we just wanted to put her on the agenda tonight, even at this late hour, and ask for the board to let Katie introduce herself and certainly Jason can speak to any other particulars, but we really want to see her move forward and move up the ladder into the town accountant's position.
Okay. Thank you. And I, I will talk about the eccentricity briefly of the fact that we're appointing someone that will be underneath Jason, is that our town charter says that we appoint the town accountant. That was created at a time where the town accountant was the top financial officer of the town. We have had for a number of years, finance director slash town accountant. Town meeting took care of that in terms of two positions, which I think is the right direction that we should move in. But, so we are appointing somebody that's not, not at the top. My hope is, is that at next year's town meeting, we can address another charter change similar that, that we did a couple of them a couple of years ago and clarify that and make sure that it's Jason's position that we, that we appoint so we can continue the, you know, in a formal way, the direct relationship that we have with Jason, which I think is working exceptionally well. And town accountant as a position is not very publicly facing. So it's just kind of that, the way that worked out. So that's why we are asked to appoint Katie. And Tim isn't appointing Katie. So that's that. Katie, why don't you unmute and maybe introduce yourself? I think we've all had the opportunity to, to meet you here or there.
Hi, everybody. I'm Katie Holt, obviously. I've been with Northborough about seven and a half years actually and just about two in the accounting office with Jason. So I'm really excited for this opportunity. It's pretty exciting here.
Great. So we know that, that, that Tim and Jason and everybody else, Lisa did, did the formal interviews, we're not being asked to do a formal interview, but is there, and we've seen her resume. Are there any questions that any board member wants to ask before we consider this?
How soon would you like to start?
I think, I think there's a date in the motion.
September 16th. My only question.
Okay, is there a motion?
I'm really excited to see you in this position, Katie, and thank you for all the time that you've spent in our town. I appreciate it. It'll be nice to see you in this new capacity. Mr. Chair, I move the board vote to appoint Katie Holt to the position of Town Accountant effective September 16th, 2024.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Laura, seconded by Julianne. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Very good. Vote is unanimous. Thank you very much. We would love to spend more time with you, but it's late and I want to see if we can squeeze a couple of more agenda items really quickly. Can we do the cemetery deed?
Thank you, Katie.
Yep, thanks, Katie.
Thank you, Katie.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thanks for...
Thank you, everybody. Good night.
And can I just say thank you for taking up this, this item for tonight? And, you know, when, when we hired Katie, I knew that she was going to be a town accountant and I'm absolutely thrilled that it's going to happen here.
Take your recommendations, everyone.
Thanks, Jason.
All right, again, could, could I ask maybe for 10 more minutes and see if we can get through a few more things? Because if, if folks don't want to, to do it, but we've got a couple of things that I think would be very beneficial. Cemetery deed, would someone like to make a motion? There's never any discussion on that, Lisa.
I'm here for the cemetery deed.
Yeah.
I always get the cemetery deed. What are you trying to say? I can do it if you want. I move the board vote to execute cemetery deeds 1192.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Julianne, seconded by Laura for cemetery deed. Any discussion? That discussion that you were voting? All those in favor? Okay, done.
Jason's...
Okay, we did that one.
Holiday schedule, can we get that one?
Mr. Chair, can we vote on the senior work off?
I would love to, yes. Okay, give us a 30-second tour of that one.
Okay, so in September, we changed some criteria around the senior tax work off program. It's one of our, our senior tax relief programs that we have here in town. You increased the benefit, individual benefit limit to $1,500. We then enacted at town meeting and a local option to raise the threshold to $2,000. There's an aggregate cap that the, the select board has put in their criteria for the program that was $40,000. We just need to increase that now based on the number of participants in the program to $50,000. And if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
So it's very successful?
Yes. It's a good problem to have, yeah.
Only question is, 50,000 because of the number of participants? You wouldn't ever flex it so that, oh, maybe we'll bring in a couple more so you wouldn't have to come back and ask?
Well, if you want to make it more than $50,000.
Okay. I just didn't know if like, for some reason it had to be exact or could you flex it?
Well, it's, it's just the, the total number of participants.
Right.
Annually, up to the point in December, I mean, in September, last September, there'd been no more than 10 or 12 participants in the program per year. Once the aggregate cap got enacted, Kendra, the Senior Center Director, was very active in recruiting people into the program. So we've had much more participation in the program than we had in the past.
Okay.
Do you want more? Would, would you use more?
This was the request from the Senior Center that came through to me, was the $10,000 increase in the program, so...
That's what's estimated, the burn rate, if you will.
Yeah, we should stick with that. We'll have to do something later. We'll do it later.
Okay, is there a motion?
Oh, no, that's me again?
Yeah, it is you, but anyone can do it?
Do you want me to do it?
Sure.
I move the select board amend senior tax work off program criteria to provide for an annual aggregate benefit limit of $50,000 and make such changes effective immediately pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 59, Section 5K.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Laura, seconded by everybody. We give it to Julianne. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Sorry, I'm going to race you along for a couple more. Julianne, you had asked that we add Lisa Subhat to, to the scholarship committee because they've got a meeting coming up?
Right.
Okay, good. Any, anybody have any questions, concerns or anything like that?
Nope.
Okay, is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move the board vote to approve Lisa Subhat for appointment to scholarship committee for a three-year term to expire on April 30th, 2027. Second.
Okay, motion made by Julianne, seconded by Mike. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, vote is unanimous. Congratulations and thank you. Lisa, meeting minutes. We are required by the open meeting law to not get too behind on meeting minutes. I will request that we maybe consider these in one block motion and if somebody has something that hasn't already been caught, that we come back and request an amendment to the later date so we're, so we can get caught up.
Sounds good. Can I make a motion?
Yes.
I move the board vote to approve the July 15th, 2024, July 29th, 2024 goal-setting workshop and the August 12th, 2024 meeting minutes as presented.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Mike, seconded by Laura. Any other discussion? All those in favor say?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Meeting minutes are approved.